Hey, welcome everybody. We call the meeting to order. Today is July 26th. This time, I would please ask everyone to rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Dave, for doing that. Everybody get a chance to see the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Need a motion to approve, please?
Make motion that we approve the agenda?
Second.
Move to second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. First item on our agenda is an action item. These are claims, board order claims. And Casey, come on up. Any questions or comments?
Didn't see anything this time.
I entertain a motion then to approve?
I move to approve the claims, board order claims, and one junior college tuition.
I'll second that.
Move to second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
How was your weekend? Went up to the motorcycle race up there in Burgdorf. Guess it wasn't a race, it was a ride. Stayed up there until the smoke got so bad I couldn't breathe anymore. So bad up there. Was gonna go to... C.S.A.S. Warren. And kinda turned the road and it was just like driving into One Sullivan Falls.
Big.
Was there a lot of people there?
Yeah, there was. I think they had 200 participants, so...
Like 150 that pre-registered.
Then they had a bunch more that... showed up and all their spouses. That was a pretty good event. Bottom line band played, so I had to get everybody up and get them wild so we could dance. But we had fun. You should've stayed.
I get to hear them every week when they practice. They live right around the corner from us.
I got Scott Keithley and Mac Hands Up going, so we were partying.
Doesn't take much to get Scott going. Last one. Alright, there you go. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Casey. Have a great day. Okay, our next agenda item is in another five minutes. And it's elected official reports.
Gabe, we just got an email on the Stibniten Mine administrative record. Available for review. Is this something that's outside of what the Stibniten Mine is? Looks like it's a specialty cleanup?
Seen this, I don't know.
Okay.
Jackson was working first? Andrew Jackson?
Yep.
Okay.
He's been around a while.
That's from, uh...
Wow.
EPA, not Forcer stuff. Not sure exactly what that pertains to.
Are you attending those Firewise Working Group or lands? What's going on?
I was out at Tamarack on Sunday, Saturday. Saw what they've been working on out there. Holy cow, that is a huge project. They're working Saturday, but they are moving a lot of debris material.
That's a good thing. Fire mitigation is a good thing.
June, how was your weekend? Oh, it's so hot. Man, oh man. Yeah, supposed to be close to a record, I think, today.
Think we've got a little bit of clouds moving in next weekend, though. Back down into the lower 80s.
Said some precipitation coming.
Well, it always rains on the fair, it seems like, every year. It rains during the fair, I should say. Well, it's about time. It's too late for some of my ground. Scorch'd earth.
I wonder what our food prices are gonna do because of drought. Drought. So I have on my calendar, and I don't know where it came from, a drought management meeting on the 29th. Are you guys familiar with that one at all?
No, I haven't heard of that one.
I saw it on my calendar.
I know we got approval by Department of Water Resources. Don't know what that means. Been until I start eating grasshoppers to get through.
I've heard they're good if they're dipped in chocolate.
That's what I was gonna say. You took the words right out of my mouth.
If you get past the legs. I don't know, but they sure hurt when they hit you in the face going down the highway on your motorcycle.
Pretty big ones inside my greenhouse, so...
Okay, we're gonna move on down to our agenda. Our next item is elected officials' reports. First one up is June. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, before I get to my cancellation, and I do apologize, I didn't even think to send you a copy of it Friday. So I did make some extra copies. But when I get to it, I'll, if you want them, I'll hand them out and go through it with you. So just to update you, good news for DMV. We have a new employee starting the 17th of August. Very excited about that. Right now, Angela, our McCall DMV, is on vacation. She will be back next week. Not, she's been gone, she'll be gone two weeks. Janet is up there soloing it, and she's doing a great job. Meg has gone up to help her a little bit, so we'll have Meg kinda go back and forth. When Meg's gone, then Kathy's alone, and of course, we fall behind here. But we're getting there. It's a never-ending cycle. We're getting there. Front office, Sue Probst is still working with us, and we'll probably keep her on board off and on at least through part of August, if not all of August. And then she's gone in September. Appraisers, we have an unbelievable crew down there. All of them have stepped up to the plate because we are shorthanded. And we will get all of the work done. If I need to go out in the field, I will. But I think that they're gonna be able to handle it just fine. Lori, our cartographer, she is at school this week, and I wanna commend her on the great job she did on all of our splits and combos and getting our maps done for us so we could get everything caught up. So other than that, we're just kind of shuffling along, getting everything done. So I have this cancellation unless you have questions for me.
No, this is what? Cancellation one?
This is cancellation number one. This is a 2021 cancellation, and Noreen is here if you have questions. Apparently, the property owner did not come in until after our appeal period. And this house and garage are not complete. She did verify phone and photos, dates provided. He is not living in it, so technically, we're not supposed to have it on the rolls. So we have requested a cancellation on the improvement only. The land does not change. So we have $526,606 on the improvement, and that is what we are requesting to be canceled. Is that amount leaving us with a market value for the land only of $65,560? It's my understanding that this will not cause a lot of problem for the treasurer at this time because levies have not yet been set. So if we're going to do a cancellation, it's better to do it before we get levies, and it affects every taxing district. Would you like copies to look at?
We actually did get one.
We got it and packed it in.
When did they apply for their building permit?
That, I don't know.
When did they apply for their building permit? My question is...
It's a 19. That's all I know, is it's a 19.
From the outside, this building looked completed. So when I pulled up on it, and the doors were shut, everything was shut, the chairs were sitting out front. I was like, sweet, put this on, because it was right at the end of the December. So it was like, put this on. So I put it on because it looked completed. When he came in, he provided photos that were dated 1231, and nothing was completed inside, so...
But what my question is, is that are they using this just to pull their camp trailer into or anything else? So they're making active progress on this? It's not just something that they're living out of?
Yeah, he indicated that they should be moving into it by July, the end of July. So I'm assuming he'll prob, I'll be getting a C of O. I, it was just a, you know, it was one of those deals. I was driving by, keeping my eye on stuff, and when I drove by, I saw it, and I was like, oh, he's done. Finally, you know? So I kinda just got excited and prematurely put it on.
We can't put it on at all until it's completely done.
And he's occupying it. And they anticipated the end of July. So I'm just gonna kinda wait until I see that C of O from the building department. So I jumped the gun on this one.
So, Noreen, is this a pretty big place?
It's, it's fairly large. It's more garage than it is living.
For this value, it's gotta be a pretty giant place.
His garage is very massive, and, but he's doing some nice, he's doing all the work himself. So that's what happened. He wanted to get the shell completed before snow and everything, so that's why it was completed when I drove by on the outside. But, you know, the chairs kinda threw me because there were some white little plastic chairs sitting out front, so it looked done, so... But we'll pick it up for occupancy for the remaining months of this year, and then put it on as new construction next year.
Great. Thank you. Any more questions? I entertain a motion to approve value cancellation. I'm assuming 21-1.
I move that we approve the value cancellation 20- or 2021-1? Sorry, I just left.
I have a second?
Yep, I'll second that.
Move to second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motions. Motion carries. Hey, anything else, June?
Uh, one last note. I will be leaving tomorrow afternoon headed to Boise. I have school. I have to keep my certification up, so I will be going to school. Nicole and Bo are at school all this week, getting their course two out of the way. Lori's at school this week, keeping her certification up. So we're gonna have kind of a skeleton crew. DeeDee is on vacation. I had to force her to take time off, but she's on vacation, so...
Okay.
Any other questions?
We could school you up here. You don't have to go somewhere else to get schooled.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next victim up is Doug.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Or Doug's been pulling his hair out.
Yeah, I did. Just to give you a brief overview of matters involving the clerk's office. We did get, I think I shared this with you. We finally received the final L2s from the State Tax Commission. The forms have been completed, so the L2 worksheets have been submitted to all of the taxing districts. Technically, it's the taxing district's responsibility to fill out the forms to get the information, but it's easier for our office to prepare those forms for the taxing districts. And then they're required to provide us with the dollar certifications by September 9th. So that's when those dollar, they provide us, they complete that form. We review that form to make sure they're not going over any of the levies. Then we provide those to the treasurer's office. The treasurer's office enters those into the system. And also, the, actually, the first step is we submit them to the State Tax Commission for certification. Once the State Tax Commission certifies those levies, then we provide them to the treasurer's office, and they enter them into the system. So the first step has been completed of the L2 worksheets being submitted to the taxing districts. And it is a different form. There is different formulas because of House Bill 389, so it is a little bit confusing this year. So we have reached out to each taxing district to inform them. If there are any questions, any concerns, please contact our office, and we will work with them on completion.
Doug, just a quick question. There's no forgone money in any of the other districts, is there?
Yeah.
Is EMS?
EMS does not have any forgone. The City of McCall has some forgone. City of Cascade has some forgone. So there are taxing districts out there that do have forgone on the books.
EMS did, there's last year, didn't they?
They did.
That's right.
So do the waterways, the snowmobile advisory, and the fair board all complete those also?
No, this is just for taxing districts. Yeah, just the taxing districts are the entities that complete the L2 worksheets.
And one irrigation district?
The irrigation districts do not complete the L2 worksheets, but what they do provide us, as well as the treasurer's office, is the amount per acre that they're going to charge. Center irrigation, lake irrigation, and I'm missing one.
Lake Fork?
That's not the name of it, is it? There are three irrigation districts that provide us with their acreage amount. I just, I can't remember. Apologize that I, it's not coming to me right now.
Lake Fork Irrigation District?
Think it is. Lake Fork.
Center.
Yeah.
Come on, man, nothing's working up here anymore. Anyway, last year, we had an issue with one of those. They were kinda late, if I remember right.
We got them in.
We got them.
Yeah, we just, there are deadlines that they need to provide those to, and we just had to reach out to them for them to provide that information to us. So the commissioners are fully aware. We're still knee-deep into the budget. We do have another budget workshop today. I apologize that Monday, I felt that it was, I don't know if I was fully prepared. I was missing my chief deputy. So we're probably going to do something similar again today, just to kinda, I need, we need to identify, you know, the intention of the commissioners on the positions, on the capital improvement. I apologize, I thought I wrote it down of what you guys wanted removed from the budget for capital improvement and put into pilt. So we'll probably just discuss that again, again, today. I do apologize that I failed to capture all of that, but we'll, we'll work through another budget workshop this afternoon. And then we'll have another one on August 2nd. I'd like to try to be done by August 2nd. If not, we'll probably either schedule another one for the 8th. Is that the next?
9th. You gotta do the calendar. Calendar's behind.
Uh, so the August 9th is really when I'd like to have, be ready for publishing. So we'll just cross our fingers, and hopefully, we can be there. If not, we'll have an additional budget workshop on the 9th.
It's to be published by the...
We have to publish it for one week. The counties only have to publish it for one week. The cities have to publish it for two weeks. I always like to have it published for two weeks, just so the general public can take a look at it and then be prepared to come to the public hearing with any questions. So we'll do our best to have it published for two weeks into the Star News. But if, if we can't, we, per code, we have to have it for one week, prior to our budget hearing, which is on the 23rd.
Okay.
Lastly, we do have, I do have the Clerk's Conference, August 10th through the 11th, I think that's the date, yeah. 10th through the 12th at Tamarack. So we do have our Clerk's Conference locally this year. I don't think I shared that with the commissioners. So all of the clerks from the state of Idaho will be attending. Well, hopefully, all of them will be attending, but the Clerk's Conference is local this year at Tamarack Resort. If the commissioners want to come and say hello.
I think that's awesome, man, that we're bringing some of that to Valley County. I think that's great.
You know, as you guys are fully aware, they try to move that, the conferences throughout the state, and it just so happened this year, it's at Tamarack.
Forgot a door price. Don't forget the door price.
And that's all I have, you guys. I guess one last thing, if you didn't see, for all the elected officials and the commissioners, the registration for the annual IAC conference in Boise just opened up. So it looks like they are going to be having an in-person conference for everyone the end of September.
Yeah, I just saw that last night.
And we will be discussing legislation on the housing issue at that conference.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't think we have anybody from prosecutors, so Sheriff, good morning.
Good morning. Okay, first off, on the action item is to look at the PTO of Captain Stanbaugh. Believe it's only for an additional 40 hours. And then it's got scheduled some time off in October. So then he should be able to get some of this down.
He came in and talked to us last week, I think, about it, because of issues going on. So I need a motion to approve the paytime offer to be increased for Captain Stanbaugh.
I'll make a motion to approve the paytime offer for Captain Stanbaugh to cap at 236 hours.
Second it.
Move to second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Second thing on action item is the grant for 911 in the amount of $41,967.24. Did you all receive a copy of that?
Yep.
It's for percentages on the annual maintenance for two years.
Thank you, 911, because my phone called them at the grocery store.
You iPhones are dangerous that way. They go right to emergency.
I was like, no, no, no! Yes, because we get...
Hundreds.
We get so many of those calls. We have to check on every one of them.
I hope it didn't go through.
Yeah, there's been a few times I've had to say, sorry, I pushed the wrong buttons. Pat, Sheriff, is this about the same as what it was last year, 41.9?
No, last year, we got...
Wasn't it more?
14, or 19, something, yeah.
What was it?
And that's, that hasn't been used, and that's for something different. That's for, to help with the move. So that will carry forward. That was a two-year.
Okay.
So on top of that, would be close to 60-some thousand.
I'm trying to remember. Is there any grant match required with this?
No. Well, it's, we're doing percentages anyway, so we're just doing a percentage of the, it's like 60% and 70%. On some portions of it.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve the FY '22 911 grant.
Oh, moved.
Second it.
Move to second, any more discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So I will just take this apart and bring you the signature page, so I don't get this all.
Okay, have you got anything else? Need to talk about?
It was back in May. I was not here, but was sent forward. Renewal of a maintenance contract for the jail fingerprint. And it was approved, but they don't have a signed copy back. So I brought that paper back for your signature.
Okay. Yeah, I remember approving that, I think we did, but I don't remember signing anything, honestly.
Okay.
You want me to date it, or can you date it?
You want to date this, and then Doug can also attest.
My heart was broken when I heard Larry left us. I would just, I still can't get over it. That was a heartbreaker.
Pretty much, so...
You never know when your number's up.
Get this part out for you, and then have it come to me, so... It's way too many in the past.
Gabe, did you actually send us your, that cash thing? It wasn't in our pack at this time. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Just if you hadn't heard, the services are gonna be Saturday, 11:00 a.m. at the LDS Church in McCall.
McCall?
11 o'clock.
Do you have anything?
Nope. We're all good. Okay, uh, next one up is Gabe. Morning.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners and Clerk Miller. First off, I do have an action item to approve the joint quarterly report between the treasurer's office and clerk's office. Should've received that a couple of weeks ago. That, that action item got postponed until today.
And to find it, is it, so we had a remaining cash, but that's...
Yeah, that's, that's not it. Certainly make copies or pass this around.
Yeah, why don't you just bring it up, Gabe? We can just take a look at it pretty quick. I don't find it either. Can I take this part?
Sure.
So everything's budgeted, or everything's in balance, obviously?
Gabby sent it out July 14th, Commissioners.
Okay, where are we putting the ARPA funds that we got? Where are we investing them?
Right now, we put them in the, we've AC'd them in. Right now, we put them in the, we've AC'd them into the Auditor's Trust.
Okay.
Uh, until the Commissioners have identified how we're going to expend those. If it's going to be this year, then we'll have to open up the budget and potentially create. I, I really recommend that the Commissioners will create a separate expense line for that, uh, just for auditing purposes. So for the time being, we've just AC'd that, that funding into the Auditor's Trust. More than likely to prepare for expenditure in 2022, unless the Commissioners have identified where to expend those in 2021.
So we can pay for the broadband, the, we hired, um, Entry Point and paid for that. That can come out of those ARPA funds.
Okay.
So I don't know if we can do like some kind of a reimbursement next year or what. But, you know, that is money that can, can come from those ARPA funds. And then also, um, any expenses on the McCall recycling site that we do toward housing. I think that that sewer modeling also could come out of those ARPA funds.
Okay.
So.
The only other thing I know is the folks from West Mountain approached me just that one time about this. You know, uh, central sewer system over there, but I haven't heard back from anybody. I don't know if anybody's pushing that over there. That would qualify as well.
That would be next year.
Yeah, that'd have to be next year.
For that, so I don't know.
Are we already paying Entry Point now? We are, aren't we? Yeah. We could do those now, but.
Have to reopen the budget to do it.
To utilize, yes. That would be my recommendation, yeah.
I mean, if we have, if we have the ability to use something other than tax dollars, we probably should. I don't know what a pain that is, so you'll have to, yeah.
Instead of opening the budget, can we just delay payment till the next fiscal year?
Well, that's up to the vendors, right? Uh, I mean, that would be up to, you know, the individuals.
Can we reimburse what we paid the vendors, I guess?
What I'm thinking, if we wanted to, we could potentially, I guess reimburse the county for the expenditures that were, would be that are being made, yeah. I believe that we could do that.
We can do that, that would be.
That would be easier. Hey, Gabe, anything else?
I do have a few things to update you on, but first if we, if we want to take action on that.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the, uh, joint quarterly report.
I'll make a motion that we approve the joint quarterly report.
Second.
Who did second it all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Alright, thank you. Um, we're down to 16 parcels in tax deed.
16, huh?
I'm pretty excited because all 16 are, are repeat offenders and they've all pulled through kind of at the last minute in previous years paying those off. And so hopefully we won't have any to sell at auction, but we'll, we'll see how it goes. Uh, we're preparing our affidavit, affidavits of compliance to be recorded today for those. And then the properties will be posted by the Sheriff's Office, um, at the end of this week.
Now, those people have to re-pace back for all that advertising and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
On top of what tax they owe.
That all gets added to it.
Okay.
That's right. Uh, my chief deputy was at the NACTFO conference, uh, last week. And she said that was very beneficial. She learned quite a bit. Actually, next week, uh, she and I both will attend the, the Idaho Association of County Treasurers Conference in Idaho Falls. So that's Monday through Thursday of next week. And that's all I have for you this morning.
Okay, any more questions for Gabe?
I think so.
Thanks, Gabe.
Alright, thank you.
Good to see you here.
Good to see you.
Okay, we're going to move on down to department heads. Our first one up is Annette. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, we're continuing to be pretty busy. The inspections are picking up a little bit. People are getting their concrete. But now they're saying they can't get trusses, so I don't know.
There was a load of trusses came up yesterday afternoon.
Was there?
I thought on a Sunday afternoon, you're bringing that wide load up the canyon?
Yuck. We are at 266 permits. Last year at this time, we had 276. So we're just 10 down. It's the first time since I've worked in the building department that we've been down. But we got plenty on the shelves and not worried about it. There are a lot of big houses. Everything that's coming in is mostly five, 6,000 square feet is a normal house. Uh, the letters are going out for our unpermitted buildings. I warned you guys about those, so.
Okay.
We'll see what happens.
Yep.
That's, that's about it.
Okay, any questions for Annette?
We can get all the supplies. We can't find labors.
Really?
Everybody is so busy right now, they just won't show up. Crazy.
It's good you can get supplies, but no labor.
Subs, labor.
But he's burnt.
Yeah, they are.
Good job.
Alright, thanks, Annette.
Thanks.
Port Services, Skip.
Morning.
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 So, uh, just a reminder, as of Saturday, I'm going to be heading down. My initiation for post is on Sunday. And I'll be there for three weeks.
You look so happy.
It's just, part of it's the heat. It's draining my soul, you know, but.
It's going to get worse down there.
Yeah. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna get ahold of the road department to see if they have a vehicle that I can take. If they don't, then I'll charge mileage just for my trips down and back with my own vehicle. That's under it. We started the first MDT meeting that, uh, I'm aware of for probably 15 years. And what that is, that's Multi Discipline Task Force. It's based on child protection cases, um, according to the statute. But it, it can work in a lot of different ways. It can work as a group that does preventative work, you know? Let's say you hear about a family or a child that needs some help. You can offer them services, not demand, but you know, um, just try to reach out and help that, that family or child before they get into legal trouble or other issues. It's just one meeting, so we're still forming it. There's likely bylaws to be made, agreements between agencies that are participating. Um, and all of us in the group are fairly new to it. So we're, we're working on that. My part in it.
Who's in that group, Skip?
So by statute, it's the prosecutor attorney that establishes and sets it. Is basically the chairhead unless designated to somebody else. Um, then you have health and welfare, which is supposed to be part of it. Law enforcement. And so McCall PD was there for this one because there was actually a child protection case that we are discussing. But, uh, we're going to be sent an invitation to the Sheriff's Department, um, the schools. I don't know, I, I haven't met the new superintendent, so I'm going to reach out to him and, and see what he thinks. And we're also discussing including Adams County Sheriff's Department, just because we share a lot of the same people. Now, there's a lot of rass back and forth. So, um, anyway, it's, it's exciting. It's, it's a big deal. Like I said, the last time I remember having any kind of consistency has been years and years. And, um, I'm excited to see that. I did mention to Brian that maybe, um, he should ask for a budget on it. And the only reason I asked, mentioned that, he, he didn't know why. And I wasn't sure, but it just seems like every committee that I'm on that actually does stuff, money comes up at some point for meetings or, I don't know. So I, I mentioned that he might want to reach out to Mr. Miller and discuss a line item. I was thinking like 2,500, but it's just because I don't know. I don't know what I don't know about it yet. Outside of that, um, everything's pretty consistent.
Do we still have anybody in, in detention?
We do. And, um, so that's an adult case. So that, that juvenile was charged as an adult, was waived.
Oh, okay.
So it's not actually within my purview, but I talked to, uh, Mr. Miller and decided that we'll still be using the detention fund for my line item to pay for that while he's in there. And there's plenty of money. We haven't used much of it. Still around 30,000. So, but that doesn't have anything to do with me, except for just paying that bill.
Um, Skip, to go back to the MDD part, is there, is it subsidized counseling or is there counseling that's available for some of these?
So, like I said, I mean, um, I, I did some research and between counties, it's kind of run in different ways. But by statute, what it's meant to be is a multi-disciplinary team to discuss CPA cases, child abuse neglect cases, and problem solve that. So what we're going to make it into or what we're going to include, we don't know. We just, we've had one meeting, it's still a discussion.
School counselors should definitely be on there.
So, well, so, um, Department of Health and Welfare is part of it. So Kristi Sofley, who does our mental health stuff for adults and juvenile, she's there. And then we had the people from Boise, because we don't have anybody that resides up here. It's been about three or four years since we've had an actual child protection person that lived in Valley County. And that was, that was part of the discussion is just, we all felt like there's been a lack of services as it comes to child protection stuff. Come to find out, they have an office that's supposed to be about 12 people and they have like four or five right now. They're really down on staff. And so they're struggling to keep up as well. It's, it's not, um, neglect as I thought it might be. It's more like it's not enough people to get the job done to the level that we've needed it in the past. So, um, a, as far as who else is involved, we did have, uh, our treatment provider from CIC, Misty Ruska was there. We had, um, a few other people that, you know, stakeholders, but I, I don't know who in the end will be part of it. And really that's up to Brian unless he, he does some design. I'm working as the secretary right now just because it was housed at the annex, but just filling in a gap.
Okay. I was just thinking if you needed somebody outside of the board, like Shepherd's Home or places like, oh, they take these kids. But I don't know the whole function of it, so I can't.
Yeah.
Say for sure, but.
It totally could be. And I think, I think the way that we were kind of envisioning it through the, our first discussion was being proactive and not just talking about CPA cases that needed some assistance. Uh, I don't know yet, and that's really not my call.
Um, to change subject, is, uh, Department of Labor still coming in up there on weekly basis?
Um, they're, they're on Mondays and Fridays. They're, they were there when I left.
And everything's okay or everything's working out? There's no overcrowding or issues or anything?
No, they don't actually have very many people that come in. So what they do is they, and I think they have to go back to like what they did before. They did a lot of announcements, the newspaper flyers and whatnot to let people know they would be there. But over the last year, since they've been working the house, I think they kind of kind of reestablished that and let the community know that they're available during that time. So that, I see like maybe four to seven people that come in on a Monday and Friday, talk with them.
And are they still using that corner conference room or what room are they using?
Courtroom.
Courtroom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
We have a negative five unemployment rate.
Negative five, yeah.
You think it can go into the negative?
Yeah, talking to them, it sounds like most of it's about, um, most of the work that they're doing right now isn't helping people find jobs, but it's like unemployment stuff and verifying information. Seems like that keeps them pretty busy.
Okay. Any other questions for Skip? Good luck at post.
Thank you, sir.
Stay cool. Get yourself one of those little square bottles.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Melissa, good to see you.
Oh, good morning.
Morning.
I give you an update on, um, some programs. And then I have Allison to give an update on Fair and 4H.
Great.
Had a great annual leave and so, uh, that took up a portion of the beginning of July. And then I feel like I've been playing catch-up. That's what happens when you leave, right? I did the U of I Together series, which is a family learning series. And I mentioned that before, the district is working together to do that every Tuesday at 4:00. And so that has been successful this spring and they're going to do a fall series as well. And so the one I did was how to recreate responsibly in undeveloped spaces. And then I gave some recommendations on how to get your, um, youth and family outdoors in fun, engaging ways, uh, to keep them entertained. So it was fun. It's my first kind of live virtual up close, um, in the field video. And then I attended the Community Development Society Virtual Conference when I returned. And I was like multitasking with getting caught up on emails, but there was some good content there. And because that, the conference was virtual, I decided to participate. Where in the past, if it was in person, I wouldn't attend because, you know, it's just too much. So it was nice to be able to peek into the window of the Community Development Society. I attended a horticulture in-service, was able to get some pesticide recertification credits through doing that. And that's also just a priority conference for me or training for me every year because there's so many horticulture questions that come into the office and that just helps me connect with other professionals and, um, network with them and ask them questions and pick their brain and learn. And so that was a good training. I did 4H record book interviews last week as well as, uh, rapid market assessment. So Ada County, um, they do rapid market assessments of farmers markets around the state. And we haven't done any in Valley County, so it was nice to be able to do Donnelly. And then that information gets aggregated to show the economic impact of farmers markets. You know, if, if people come and spend money outside of the market to that town, how much do they spend, um, with local vendors? What brings them to market and stuff like that? And so that was really busy. So surprised how much people wanted to do sticky dots. Because usually when I go to meetings, everybody's like, oh, sticky dots. But the public loved it. It was a very popular, uh, booth. And I'm planning an energy efficiency class in person and as part of the U of I Together Fall Series, um, and with Idaho Power. Um, and then I was, had a community member from Leisure Time reach out and they wanted educational programming. And so, uh, I'm going to try to do some targeted educational programming at Leisure Time. And working with HOA there and they're going to advertise it. And that'll be about the natural landscape. Working with 4H Camp Program next week. And then the Master Gardeners will be tabling at the fair and they're continuing to table around the county at Farmers Markets and Fisher Pond Community Garden and other events that we, we identified as being good public venues. President Green visited last week. And then as far as committee work, I will be more regularly attending the Economic Development Council meetings and, um, working specifically to bring the Trails Committee together two times per year. Um, and that is coming up on August 10th. And then working with the Regional Arts Committee. And then the ongoing monthly Peer Learning Network, uh, meetings that I've been doing, which over the summer have had a lower participation rate. But I think that's just part of the summer too. And so I had asked that group, do you want to continue? And they said yes. And so, uh, I, I hope to have more people join again in the fall. But they did indicate that they were interested in continuing, so there just must be a lot of summer conflicts. Those are my updates. Do you have any questions for me before I pass the mic?
No, other than thanks for your help on the grasshopper deal. I know the, the guy was up spraying and, uh, talked to the airport folks and he said that he would be willing to come back if people felt like they would change their mind or wanted to spray more. But he sprayed quite a bit in the middle of the valley and appreciate your help on that.
Yeah, yeah. The hardest part is getting the word out. And then there was people talking about grasshoppers the other day and, um, it was a Cascade Must Know Facebook post. And so I, I gave the information there too. Yeah.
Well, it's kind of interesting because he was in the middle of spraying and then I think he was the state of Oregon and the state of California came out and banned the chemical that he was spraying chloro preno.
Okay, okay.
In their states. So it's like, hmm, we'll see how this goes now, how people feel about it, but.
Okay. It's always something.
Appreciate your help on that.
Yep, thanks.
Melissa, what time is the meeting on the 10th, August 10th?
Uh, 9 a.m. and it's a Zoom. And you should have that invite already. That's something that Andrew and Jill are the keepers of. And so, um, if you're not, if you don't have that link, let me know and I'll connect you with them. Or you can reach out and ask them.
You doing those meetings or?
I am. Thanks for picking that up.
Yeah.
That was a big gap. Another one of the big gaps that Andrew just left behind.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely going to be sitting in as the facilitator of the meeting and then hoping people step up to take the action steps to the, and so I'll be recording who says they're going to do what. And then we'll check in on six months on the progress, so.
Okay, Allison, come on up. Are you going crazy yet?
Almost there. Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I, I canceled a reading program today because I have that much to tell you, so. And I can cancel it. I had someone take my place. Shawna took my place today, so. Let's see, let me back up. Hold on to your heads. I wasn't here at the last meeting because I finished drone instruction with an AmeriCorps. The grant came. The grant came through for STEM learning through Idaho Community Resource Grants. We are the proud recipients of $80,000 throughout the year to do programming and pay professionals, STEM educators and others. So I don't, it's not the Allison's network that covers all of this, but I have help and support. That's some great news. And then I came back and we went right into the Large Livestock Field Day. The UI intern I have right now from college really did a great job helping me with the stations. She was a 4Her before, so she could take a look and say, you know what we really need to do? And just having her help and efforts were, it's, it's phenomenal. It's so much help for somebody to understand the program and have gone through it. So that was a big success. We probably had 70 people there. And then we went on to, so doing repairs of the fairgrounds in between. I brought a list of stuff we're trying to do for the 4H portion of it.
Okay.
10 gates for swine gates have been built. All the hardware, they've been painted. Russ Perry, 78 years old, out there working on it. But I've got to have an adult do the saw and, and whatnot to make the cuts. But the kids, some, two teens took off work because you're right, everybody is working. As, you know, there's no limit to that. So they did take off some time though to come down and help me drill the boards and put them together. Anyway, it's, it's a pretty good list of some work still to be done, but we're getting, we're knocking it off. Then successful record book interviews, two days of that. I'm currently, of course, it's got two weeks before fair, so if you're not aware, that's, I put on 14 different shows for all the species of animals. That's not including the market animal auction or the Round Robins. Four judges for record books. And I have four judges during fair. Anyway, just some of the ins and outs of what it's put together, but it's coming together. Youth Advocacy Coalition is going to do a fun event for kickback and raise money and awareness for that program. So I was just kind of thinking, so the partner outreach. We've got some other groups, two friends of Cascade that want to join. U of I will have a booth in our commercial barn area. Been working with Linda Stradly, who's picked up the open class barn and she is gold. We struck gold with this woman. She is such a huge help, went in to help organize. Really has taken a lot of detail into what we could do with that program and getting entries out, so we'll be doing as much publicity for that as possible. Speaking of publicity and working with Tom from Star News today to get some of the events out, more information that way. A challenge this year because some of the information that went out was not correct. That's just the luck of it sometimes. Your draft goes out of the farebook instead of the finished copy. But all in all, the schedule in the back is correct. A lot of the events and times are correct. The rodeo had some big changes and that's posted on Facebook. And Tom will have those, those details as well. We had a good fair board meeting the other night, just to kind of work on the details, what's left. What, you know, do we have everything? Is everything lined out, ordered? Tents, ice machine, all the cleaners set up now for the restrooms. Thank you. And I think we're ready to roll, so here we go. A lot of excited kids, best part. They've done a lot of good work this summer and that's my update for now.
Allison, have you talked to Jeff about the groom, the arena groomer and all that?
So I will, but initially it's so packed with those weeds and they're so hard to get out of there.
I noticed that.
I think Tyler's going to have to bring his tractor down with the bigger equipment. I mean, I think that's got to be really turned over. I think our groomer teeth are, will do fine once that's all heaved out and tilled, right?
Almost need like a spring tooth or something that goes down about that far and tears everything up.
Because that's just, and that's something that needs to be looked at, you know, to
Tyler, who, who has the tractor?
So Tyler's got one, Crockett.
Okay.
And we're trying to figure out how to, he stepped up to help the fair board, so try to figure out how to get that rolling. You know, and it, and down the road too, having sprinklers set up to keep that water because getting a water truck and running all of that. Toby is going to look at seeing if he can help us get that done, but that would be, and I don't think that's the hugest investment either. We already have the water down there and the lines. It's not, it's just simply to keep things going and then we can maintain that a little better.
Well, let me know if you need any help with that.
Okay.
I can come in and use the county's tractor and drag something around. But I stopped the other day and looked like this is almost like concrete.
It's going to be, and it's got to start now and they, yeah, we're going to have a heck of a.
And I think Jeff just had some of it re-oiled, you know?
Okay, no, I don't know.
Looked to me like there was.
I'm not so sure that the tractor's the biggest issue. It's just what it can do right now for that arena with the groomer that's on it. So I think that if it needs a little work, we could get that done, but it's more of.
And I was asking, we did kind of a group email, but I was asking the fair board if we put more money toward the program, you know, what would that be used for? And they do have some equipment needs, walkie-talkies, cash registers. I can't remember everything else that actually came up, but my question was is that, you know, if we do fund it more, what portion of the facilities could, you know, could be a part of that? So if you guys were to take and use a certain percentage of that per year to purchase these items, you know, what else could you use? And it might be those types of slight upgrades, the sprinkler system, you know?
And buildings and maintenance, just to maintain those grounds that are just been depleted and, you know, and, and multi-use and gotten a lot of good use. But yeah, it's time to, like even, so I need gravel and rock, loose gravel and rock. I'll probably get from Josh Davis hopefully shortly. And then we'll have to figure out what, what to charge or what to do for that. But I need it in between the sheep and the goat pins. That is on this list as well, but it's because all the water runs on each side. And unless that's concrete where it can kind of, you know, so the water can drain through.
Makes a big muddy mess right in the middle.
It just, yeah, so every year we build it up so that it has a place to drain through on the side and then build up where the kids will take all the waste, animal waste out to the side. That's still got to come out and that's, I'm going to talk to Jeff to see if he can help Carl's out knee-deep in work for at least another week and a half. So we're getting as creative as possible, calling all, all hands on deck.
Looking for, you know, what the plans so that we can act, because we've got a budget now. So it's, you know, what are those, those specific plans?
Now's a good time to think about it, yeah. Why we're in the middle of it and.
So if you want to leave me your list, let me take a look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, come on up. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope. There's kids' competition and money, but it'll all go up.
Doug, I saw that the cash reserves, there's still 15,000 in there that we didn't, didn't expend to the fair board. So do we, the cash forward, are you keeping a minimum balance in there or is that just need to?
Take a look, management.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry you missed your chance. Come on up.
As we discussed during budget meeting, Pat indicated that we had to change our contract for a youth tracker to a part-time employee due to federal laws, employment laws. And I just want to let you know that we've gotten that done, the job description. She's, she's indicated she's talked to Douglas. We agreed at that time during budget meeting to increase that from 3,500 to 5,000 a year. Pay her.
Is that Sue's position?
Yeah, for our youth tracker. I'm just supposed to let you know that we got that done.
And you got that, Doug? All right.
That's all. Sorry.
Thanks. Pat's not here today, so we'll go to Jeremy. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I don't have a whole lot today. The two biggest things are the new website has been sent out to the departments to look at their pages and make any comments or corrections or anything like that. So hopefully we can go live with that pretty soon. And then some of the upgrades we're doing, we got some equipment in the other week that we're deploying. So here in the next couple of approval cycles for the, for the expenditures, there'll be a, a pretty big one from us, just so you're aware.
And those are for monitors, new, new desks?
We got some monitors and then for the, um, the storage upgrades that we're doing, we got, we got the, we got the box in finally, and that's the biggest, the biggest expenditure on this.
And that's out of this year's budget?
Yes, yes, it's all out of this year's budget, yeah.
Servers. Is that what the storage uses, servers?
It houses all of the, the virtual servers, yes.
And you're saying that's coming here pretty quick?
We got it.
Okay.
It came on, it came out on Friday, so we should be getting the invoice from the vendor soon, so that'll be a pretty big chunk. So if you see something big come through from us, that's what it is.
Don't be scared, huh? Okay, anything else?
Are you getting ready to hire another person in your department? Are you going to wait for a while more or pulling your hair out yet or?
No, I'm not pulling my hair out yet. I still, I'm going to fill that position and I'll probably start working with Pat on that pretty soon.
Okay, good. You don't want to pull her hair out and you end up looking like, nevermind.
I don't want to overstress you. You've got money in your budget, so get somebody hired.
Hey, anything else?
That's all I have. This is all my questions.
Thank you. Have a great day. Cinda.
Morning.
Good morning.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission has set a special work session to meet with the Board of County Commissioners on August 19th. And that will be at 6:00 PM. And I will post an agenda. So if you can just get your topics that you want to discuss to us prior to that meeting so that they have a chance to think about it and ponder through that. Met with Tamrac on how they're going to comply with employee housing and, you know, how they're proceeding with some other things. And I invited them to that work session so that they could present their plans to the Planning and Zoning and the Board of County Commissioners at the same time. And so we have not confirmed that at this point.
It's just a presentation. There's no decision-making or anything.
Right, no decision-making, no deliberations, nothing like that. It's just that this is what we're planning on doing to give you a heads up about where they want to put it, what it's going to be, that type of thing.
And when is this?
August 19th.
Or the same night?
Potentially. If not, they'll have to come to the P and Z and then, and then bring it to the Board of County Commissioners after that. We haven't decided yet. I haven't decided if it's going to be an amendment to the PUD or not. But I'll take a look at it.
So this would not be a standalone PUD?
No. No, there were elements in their original planned unit development that required a certain number of employee houses, like 600 units or 40% of their workforce, which they've historically accommodated off-site in other units. They want to put these internally. And there were different areas where they were supposed to put that in the original planned unit development. But I believe we're going to shift it to a different location and will most likely amend that through approval with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We haven't gotten that far yet. They wanted to show the Planning and Zoning and County Commissioners, you know, what their intentions are. So it would ultimately accommodate those 600 units.
I, I'm sitting here and you guys tell me where I'm, where I'm wrong with this one. But if the public is coming to that meeting, we have a specific purpose to discuss between us, you know, some plans. If they know Tamrac's coming with that large of a proposal or a process, is that going to, you know, bring a lot of people to the meeting to voice their opinions?
Well, they can't, it's not a public hearing.
Understand that.
It's just a work session. They can sit and listen. Same with the work session with the Planning and Zoning Commission. They can sit and listen, but it's not a public hearing. Public will not be invited to speak.
And I think I would make that statement in, when you advertise for this meeting, that it's, that they're not allowed to jump up and scream and holler.
I, I doubt that that's going to happen.
I doubt too, but you never know.
Yeah, at least with the, the Tamrac issue.
Well, just make sure we don't violate any open meeting laws or anything like that.
Oh, we won't. Let's see, the Mockwitz matter, we, we settled that.
Good for you. Awesome, Cinda. Very, very nice job.
And we were able to break out, she did have a number of different issues in that presentation. And yes, somewhere there is magical right-of-way that, that came up between, you know, along her property that should not be there in the original plat. And that's what she was trying to get at. But once, you know, we split the issues, then we were able to figure out exactly what she was talking about. And June's supposed to be talking to Lori, the catastrophe person, and try to find out where that right-of-way came from. So we'll make sure that that's, gets done. That's about it. We've been busy. Typical planning and zoning matters. Lots of neighbors, lots of neighbors interested in what their neighbors are doing.
Eventually, so we were trying to figure out how we could plan for growth, at least for a couple of years. So it really starts with your department and how many plats you have in, coming through, how many lots you think may come on in the next couple of years. And then kind of to a net's department. So is there, and I don't, I don't want to burden you because I know how busy you are, but if it's easy, give us some idea on how many lots may be coming available?
Just look at the agendas. I mean, I can't talk about all the applications and developments that I'm talking to developers about until I have an application on my desk. And once we have that application, we put it on the agenda.
And, and you might relate to Lori that I appreciate getting those agendas ahead of time and kind of see what's coming. And we need to talk, the three of us, about what we want to talk to P and Z about on this 19th meeting, some of the issues that we see coming down the road. And we'll, we'll try and get our marbles lined up here pretty quick and get that information over to you and you can relate to P and Z. But mostly to me, dealing with roads and maybe some impacts that we're not covering. We'll, we'll get our stuff together and get it to you as soon as we can.
Okay.
All right, anything else for Cinda?
I will start a spreadsheet and send around to you guys so you can add your thoughts to. So I'll just start an Excel spreadsheet and.
Okay, thanks, Cinda. Parks and Rec, Larry.
Morning.
Morning, Larry.
Oh, boy, it's been busy. Been quite a few complaints, trying to deals to keep up. Like always, I answer complaints immediately and, and mainly on the raft park is where I'm getting most of the complaints.
What do they complain about? Just too slow?
Outfitters are backing up, parking, unloading their rafts and then training all their people there. And I've talked to them and I'm not getting any, anywhere with dealing with them. So I've actually, we've inserted with, Cinda and I have been working on the new ordinance, which we'll talk about in a minute. And we included some information in there on that. Also, I've got a, you know, Danny and I worked on the warming hut up here Saturday for seven hours and got quite a bit done to the point where we could remove the caution tape and it's safe up there now and we've just got some finish work to do. This is an outline of what I'm doing on the sustainable recreation strategy. All the users that are on this, I'll be sending an email out for them. I'll be asking them for some history, current conditions and projects and a 10-year goal. And that way we can include all the users as we find them in this strategy.
Larry, have you been talking to any of the commercial guys on the raft park about throwing some funds at us?
Yep.
What kind of reaction are you getting?
Nothing from Cascade. Bear Valley is not interested. We just need to pass the.
Bear Valley's not interested?
No, they weren't before either. I got shut up pretty hard.
What was their reasoning that they don't need to pick?
It's a volunteer. It's a donation. Anyway, we're working on it and I've talked to a couple of the kids that are unloading the rafts there and ask them for help. But it's just a mess down there. I mean, there's, as Mr. Hasbrook's saying, they're lined up. Normally, they don't line up to the north and they're lined up north all the way down to the ranch house now. It's ridiculous. It's just, well, it's great. As long as they spend some money while they're up here.
So do we need law enforcement presence in order to?
It would always help for a drive-by.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to discuss that with the Sheriff's Department and see if, you know, they're down there.
I talked to the guys that are down there, our shuttle people, and they said there's been, Marine deputy had been down there twice and said it helps. They don't even have to talk to anybody. In fact, if we find an old pickup and paint it like a sheriff's car, park it, I think that might help. Kinda crazy, but it is what it is. So.
So you sent this out. So explain this to me again. This is, you are coming up with a sustainable recreation strategy by sending this to all of the partners down below?
That's correct. I will send, I will send an email or discuss on the phone, asking them for at least two paragraphs of history, current conditions and projects and a 10-year goal. That way we know what all of our users, and it gives us buy-in too. And we'll include that in our strategy, along with, one of the biggest things is the financial part, which I've been already working on quite a bit, just because Mary and I have been working on that. And yeah, yeah, we gotta start.
Larry, do you know who takes care of the banks put in? Is there a club? Is there somebody does that or is that?
You mean the, where they take out down there?
No, where they put in, they're by the state ITD.
Oh, that's the state.
The state does that. So they take care of the bathrooms and all that.
Well, the Forest Service cleans the bathrooms.
And they're having.
Yeah, the state has the property.
I talked to somebody this morning about that and they were having problems with the outfitters too because they didn't have a place to park for so many people. So they were allowing them to park over by the state sheds, but they were leaving their stuff there. So the state told them they can't leave their stuff there anymore.
Overnight?
They were told they could be there till they get the rafts launched.
Okay.
And it's just staying there too long.
So other places are having the same issue?
Oh, sure. I talked to Gordon Kruichshank last night and he, I mean, he was complaining that they couldn't park their boat trailer up there on the Snake River because there's so many people now. They're all along the road. They're in every grassy area and there's just no room to park. And we all know that. And that's kind of the priority right now is to find places, find room and try to make the best of it we can. But in the meantime, I think we need to have rules and part of the rules are fees. And I personally don't like fees, but the fees are maintenance fees. They're camping maintenance fees. They're parking maintenance fees. And the fees go to just making sure we're providing good facilities. So we've sent that to you, the stuff that we've worked on and we're asking, do you want us to set up a public hearing on those?
Once we get the amounts and what we're looking at, you mean?
I've sent that all to you last week on email.
Did you see the email that I sent you back? I thought it was a good start and I just, the only thing I was kinda wondering is if there was a way to work with the landowner down at Smiths Ferry.
Yeah, I think that's a good, so I'm kinda pushing this a little bit because we've been doing this for five years now. And we keep talking about it and talking about, talking about, we're not getting anywhere. And we really need to get beyond that. Let's get it started, then we can have that conversation. Because I think it's a great idea, but how, you know, that's gonna probably take a few more months. I would love to get this in place in the next 30 days.
I think, I don't know, what do you guys feel? I think we should do probably a public hearing. The commercial guys will show up and some private folks, but I think it'll get to meet the papers and let people know we're trying to fix the problem, so.
I don't think the commercial guys will complain, to be honest with you. They're just so busy that they, you know, we just gotta get it in place and then we'll have the funds to do what we need to do.
Our strategic planning committee just met last week. And one of those, one of the largest initiatives that's coming out of Star is the expansion of the recreation programs in Valley County. I'll send that to you. It's represented, you know, pretty much throughout the county as far as all the employees. And maybe we could do something jointly where, you know, we're talking about the strategic plan for the county. Because that's where we're getting hit a lot, is that people don't know that we're even doing any planning for our future. You know, people just, they're not understanding that we actually do have a strong strategic plan now and we're starting to really work that plan. So maybe we can do something jointly and do some kind of a marketing deal with McKenzie and, you know, put out that, yeah, Valley County recognizes recreation needs to grow here.
You know, I would say too, is like maybe a letter to the commercial outfitters in writing. It says just exactly what Sherry's mentioning, you know, the summer and winter. And just say, hey, you know, based on the growing demand, like, we're gonna have to start charging for our facilities and the expansion to cover the, you know, increasing use. And, you know, send that out to them and say, you know, this is what's coming down the line and this is why.
And absolutely, that's why the public hearing.
I think, I agree with the public hearing.
And all this stuff would go out and, like I said, it wouldn't be, we're not talking about a launch fee. We're talking about a launch maintenance fee. We're not talking about a camping fee. We're talking about a campground maintenance fee, $10 per site.
Well, Larry, we're gonna have to do that when the ordinance is complete, correct? So you're saying you're gonna have the ordinance and everything ready to go in the next 30 days?
It's ready right now. I sent it to all three of you.
And does it need to go through P and Z first? I can't remember.
Huh?
No. So it comes directly to us first? Okay.
Yes.
And Larry, what I would suggest is you take this letter and maybe add another column up here, just what she just got through, saying that we have strategies, these are our plans. This is the reason why you're getting this letter is because we're gonna start looking at parking lot maintenance fees and launch maintenance fees and we want your input.
So do you want me to wait to move forward on the ordinance and the fees until we go through all this other stuff?
Not the ordinance, no.
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
I don't.
I don't think so. I think we can move forward on it, but the big thing is to get this out to everybody, know that this is coming.
I'll try to talk, I'll talk to the Star News and see if we can put something in there and move forward. It's gonna take me a while, as far as all these users, to find out who the contact, I mean, we got, we got the easy ones. We got Citra and Simba and Pathways and the Pickleball Association and Snowmob Clubs. Those guys are all the easy ones. It's the Astronomical Association, I know him. But getting all those guys to participate, the Forest Service Payette and the Boise, that'll be a little difficult.
I think you're gonna have to do a whole letter of explanation of what you're trying to do here. Because if I got this, I'd be going, I have no idea what this is and I have no idea.
I think I'll do a personal introduction and then send the letter with an outline. I wouldn't, this is just for us. I wrote this up just to let you know what we were working on. I would not send this out.
Okay.
Well, I think this is a great idea to start from, but you need some kind of explanation upfront that because of overuse and demand on our services, this is why we're approaching this with an ordinance and maintenance fees and all that stuff. So everybody kinda knows.
And as far as the fees, I've already discussed this with Carol Lundgren, just to make sure that the issue back at Warren and CSAS and they had no problem whatsoever with it.
Well, good.
And keep in mind, when we talk about permanent residents, we're talking about people who, that is their home, not people who just own a lot back there or their grandpa's aunt's nephew has something. And we're only talking maybe four, maximum.
Right. And the next time you talk to her, just have them go to Idaho County and ask to join Valley County and see what kind of reaction you get.
Comes up with every conversation.
Yeah, I know it.
On one hand, they want to, but on the other hand, they don't want any rules.
They don't want any rules, but they have to do the work.
Yes, yes.
That's the issue.
Yeah.
Put them on the list of counties that wanna be a part of Idaho.
I would love to have that whole group as part of, yeah, as part of Valley County. That would be pretty awesome. No, that's it. So you want us to go ahead with the?
Yeah, the action item. You have an action item, the Wolverine.
Yes.
And you sent that to us. I think it's, when we talked about it last week, I think it's an appropriate thing to do to join that lawsuit. We are a democracy here. We need to vote on that. So I need to know your guys' feelings.
So the only, the only question I had is, so the letter that we received was from someplace in Montana. So I mean, it's kinda like a form letter that they're sending out, but there was things referenced in that that didn't have anything to do with us. So what actual letter are you?
What happened was a little history, okay? We had a Wolverine collaboration and was going really well. We had ICL and Winter Wildlands and groups like that in it. And we came up with this plan. And it was a really, and I sent that to you this morning, really good plan on how to do some education and help the public understand the Wolverine issue. And Fish and Wildlife has done a five-year study. Fish and Wildlife decided, after doing their study, doing all the science, that the Wolverine is not an endangered species. They said there are some areas that are at risk and none of those were here. So that was all fine and good. And I discussed this with you guys about a year ago. And that was all fine and good, but then the, some of the groups that we're involved with, Winter Wildlands, ICL and a couple others decided that that didn't meet their needs. So rather than following the science, they filed a lawsuit. So they want the judge to make a decision on whether it's an endangered species or not. So we are, we are, we, so now there is a group that wants to interject themselves into that lawsuit on the side of Fish and Wildlife, saying, we support Fish and Wildlife. That is not an endangered species. If it became an endangered species, we would lose a lot of recreation in Valley County, including it would affect downhill skiing, it would affect backcountry skiing, snowmobiling, mountain biking, hiking, just about everything that we know and love for no reason.
So Larry, somewhere you sent us, is that what you sent this morning? That's not?
No, this morning is a history. We put together, the ISSA said, we'll pay for it, or the ISSA will pay for it. And we put together an action item to deal with, with the critters around here. And it was really well put together. We had scientists help us. One guy that has studied Wolverine, he's got a pet Wolverine of all things, all his life, and helped us put it all together. And I thought it was a great plan. That's what we were getting ready to introduce a year ago. And then the lawsuit happened and that kinda shut everything down.
I guess what I'm asking, Larry, is, I have a letter in front of me.
I didn't answer, I didn't answer you. I apologize. So the reason Montana, so the group that filed the lawsuit did judge shopping. They looked for the most friendly judge they could find and that judge was in Montana. So they filed a lawsuit in Montana. We had, the ISSA had to hire an attorney in Montana because the attorney for the ISSA wasn't licensed in Montana, even though he'd be, and that's why you see the Montana stuff.
So, but what you are asking us to do is to sign on to a letter that doesn't reference, I mean, it references a bunch of stuff over in Montana. I guess that's what I'm confused, what you're asking me. Do you want just our approval saying, yes, we feel like we should sign on to this case? Or is there a letter that actually needs to be approved or?
Yes, Clerk Miller has that.
What I understood, Commissioners, is the resolution.
It has a resolution.
And Sandra sent that to us on Thursday.
Actually, yeah, she sent it to me, then I sent it out to you guys.
All we have to do is put in Valley County and kinda finish filling it out, name the resolution, which I think Larry could do.
I actually.
Put it all together and then.
Clerk Miller said he'd put it together for me.
Nice.
Put all the right things and the names on it. And it's all being paid for. It's no, there's no cost to the county or anything. It's just showing support and all the other counties around are signing on too.
I have no problem with that. I just wanted to make sure we were doing what you were asking us to do.
Yes, you are.
So what would be the resolution number? Do you know that?
2116.
2116. Mistress, I, sorry, man.
I always sent, also sent this off to the civil attorney, Brian Oakey, for his review. I don't know if he responded or if he provided you guys with his input at all. He gave me some input back and forth. I had some concerns about whether or not this was really a county issue. I mean, obviously the economic side of it from, you know, the winter recreation is huge. But I just, I maybe have some reservations about this being a county issue. I almost see it as more of like a recreationist issue. And believe me, that's a weird statement for me to have as far as my interest in recreation. But I just wonder where our support is gonna really take us in this. Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Oakey gave me a list of plus and minuses on it. Really didn't have any concerns about it, other than that if the case was lost, that there could be penalties that those that signed on could end up helping with, share the burden of if you want to.
There also needs to be the name of a commissioner as the lead contact.
According to this, all three of us sign it.
And number five, though, we have to identify a name of a commissioner as the lead contact who's interested in doing that, but I don't have time, I'll be honest with you.
No, I don't mind throwing my name in for that one unless Dave wants it.
Either way, you know, like I said, I just, I guess my concerns are just that, is that, is this, you know, more of an association issue or is this a county issue?
The other counties are signing on?
Well, we didn't have a list, we didn't have a full list. The list that we had was Idaho County. There were three, I think, three counties that had signed on right now as of when you sent this to us. Fremont County, which is the largest snowmobiling, grooming entity in the states.
I've been given the responsibility to talk to Adams County and, you know, which is pretty easy to do. But yeah, I just came here first and, I don't know, I feel pretty strongly about it. I really hope you guys do, do sign on to it. I'm afraid what'll happen to our winter recreation if Fish and Wildlife loses this. You know, we don't even have a travel plan right now, so this is just protecting the economy of Valley County.
I agree with you, Larry, 100%. I think, you know, it's better to risk losing than not do anything at all. If you don't do anything, you get what you get.
I agree with that, so I'm in support of this.
So I would entertain a motion then to approve Resolution 21-16, the motion to intervene in the Wolverine ESA listing.
So moved.
Moved in second. Any more discussion? So once Doug and you get this put together, we can sign it this week or next week, Monday, whenever he need?
I can probably get it done at lunch, Mr. Chairman.
And so we'll try and sign it at the end of the day and get it back to you. You can get it to Sandra and.
Yeah, it'll go into Sandra.
So we got a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything else?
I'm gonna send you our strategic plan around this, okay, so you can actually see that. And I would like to see what you're proposing to send out with this.
I'd be happy to be the representative on that with you.
It'll be, it'll, it's gonna be an interesting journey, just contacting all the different users, getting it in a proper format so that we can have everybody put their put in in on it. And like we've said all along, some of our strategic plan for parking lots and land issues, we gotta pretty much stay.
I'm curious, so like this weekend was the Idaho Trailmen Association, you know, ride up in, in, wherever it is, Bergdorf. You know, the groups like that, that are the Idaho groups, I would think would have some, you know, interest in this type of thing too. I know the snowmobilers get money, so we get funding through that. But what other groups at the state level should we be talking to about this?
Well, I got Simba in there. If you look at the list, Simba's listed.
That's not a state.
Huh?
That's not a state agency.
State association.
Not local either, but it's not local either. The Idaho State ATV Association is on there. I'm trying to get ahold of the Rock Climber Group because they do have a large regional group. And so I'm trying to get ahold of them. Larry was doing a lot of that. And it's, like I said, it's gonna be a journey. It's gonna take a lot to put this together. Most, most of these are put together by large groups, but I think we can handle it.
I was gonna say, I just had a couple of folks that I was gonna add on there too, is the Trail Runners Association. They're not really a group per se, but, you know, they're the ones that put the three races on every year, including the I'm Tough 100 Miler. Like, they would be a great partner in there. We've been trying to figure out how to integrate them into some of the other projects that we've been working on. I don't know if you have the contacts for them or not, but I can help you with that. And then the other group is the Hiking Club, which is, you know, mostly senior citizens, but they are very active.
I got the Snowshoe Club and then the other day I was thinking, my gosh, I missed, just talk about a large group is the Fat Tire, Fat Tire Bike Association that does all the snow bike stuff, which I'd love to get them to come over here, but they concentrate on Fremont County for some reason.
What about all the boating associations and, I guess, waterways?
Like I said, this is gonna take some. I'm, like I said, this is gonna take some time. You brought it up a week ago and, and I think we made some headway and it's gonna take.
So one of the, one of the things that came out of the strategic plan was creating an advisory group, a recreation advisory group, with all of these different people on it, meeting just like Waterways does and Road Department and all of that kind of stuff, you know, and getting more active participation from an entire recreation group. Hoping somebody up here would take on a recreation advisory group. But that was the strategic plan. That was the planning committee that came up with that, so.
Well, let's just be careful that we don't out-meeting our time. I like, I love advisory groups. You know, the advisory group I work with right now at one time suggested that they become, even though they do meet year round, they would love to do summer advisory. And they do some, but not a lot.
But what group is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking about the Winter Rec?
The snowmobile advisory group, yeah. Cause they're all, they're all big summer people. They're boaters and hikers and.
Maybe we could transition that into a recreation advisory group.
What, what would be needed to set up another advisory group? I can't remember what the statute says as far as.
You know, you gotta have bylaws and, well, no, actually, I think Oakey told me that we don't even have to have bylaws. So in the road advisory group, we identified the people and accepted them onto that board and.
You don't have to do minutes and record everything, do you?
We do.
We do on that.
We do.
Gotta follow all the open meeting laws and we publish the minutes and the.
So I would be in favor of morphing the Winter Rec group into a year-round rec group if they're so interested.
Very interested.
You just add more folks to that group.
They're actually working on, one of the things they're gonna work on is with, is some of the legislation to change the way some of the ATV money is spent right now. Where there's a lot of concern because just like in, and I think, maybe I didn't mention to you guys, IDPR is having another meeting on the, on the Waterways, how the Waterway funds are used. Cause they've been challenged from up north. They, there's a group up there that wants to be able to take a hundred percent of it. Right now it's limited to thirty percent. So I'll be on that Zoom meeting again. And there's also, the I R C is going up to, they're having a meeting in Wallace. Again, they get as far away as they can and make, for making that decision.
So who else is on that Zoom meeting with you? I mean, is the Waterways committee?
That'll be IDPR. I know Tamara from Fremont County is on it, Sandra Mitchell, she'll be up there. There's quite a few different people. I talked to Kevin about it a little bit and.
Did you reach out to Douglas Rowe about that as well?
Who?
Douglas Rowe.
I don't have the phone number, but I will.
He's the chair of the Waterways Advisory Committee for us.
Yes, Camp Idaho Haven, Larry. Yes, Camp Idaho Haven.
Kevin has contact information for him too.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of surprising because we actually had this first Zoom meeting on it and it was a hundred percent in favor of leaving it at thirty percent. And so then it went to the directors and the director sent it back to have another meeting on it, which makes me a little bit nervous.
That's why we need a louder voice, yeah. So Douglas, I know that when I was on Waterways, we were addressing this a year ago.
I know Tamara's been, some of the emails she sent me, I couldn't say in public. The words weren't very nice.
Okay, anything else? We gotta move along.
Commissioners, I apologize just for the resolution. Who was the county designating?
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, Dave said he'd do it, sorry.
I have included that in the resolution. I will print it off for you guys to sign.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Have a good day. Hey Scott, you're up. You guys need a break or is everybody okay?
I'm good.
Like you're getting around all right.
Yeah, it gets stiff when I sit and stuff, but.
That's more telling you not to sit so much.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Okay, start off the house over there. They're about complete, doing carpet today. So probably by the end of the month here, we've, I gotta get a vanity and toilet installed, dishwasher. Have we decided we want to provide washer and dryer, refrigerator, or what we're gonna do with that?
I think we should at least do the fridge. Is there room for a setup for washer and dryer?
Yeah, there's a specific room right off the, right off the kitchen.
What do you recommend?
I don't know, you know, most people have theirs, you know? I don't know, want to do the expense to do that.
So we're not furnishing anything? They have to provide their own furnishings, correct?
Yeah, their own furnishings. There is a stove there, kind of got a broken handle on the oven. I gotta get a dishwasher installed. I'm not gonna put a disposal on there, I don't think, cause that just can lead to problem with the older houses and the drainage and stuff. So yeah, I was looking at toilet, vanity, dishwasher, and then what we wanted to do about, like I say, a fridge and washer and dryer.
I say we put a fridge in there, but a washer and dryer? I mean, the laundromat is right here. If somebody doesn't have one, they could go use the laundromat.
I agree with that.
Seems reasonable.
Get some purchase of fridge for there. Like I say, they're, they were, we had to come in yesterday because the hot water heater quit in jail. And Sean, they're head, he's kind of general foreman for Castle Mountain pulled in where, because the guy's supposed to carpet this weekend, but they're, they're this morning. They're got everything out there and they're getting after it.
What was the matter with that elements?
What's that?
What was the matter with the hot water heater?
It just trips now and then for some reason. You just gotta go in, hit the power back on off. It was kind of strange things. There's two actually recirculate lines on that. And one of the recirc lines had the valve in front of the recirc pump shut off and no one seemed to know why it was off. It was off, but it's just it has a tendency to trip at times.
What if we're getting power surges?
I would kind of wonder, because we had a deal last week for all the lights in the kitchen. Just always working was the end of the bulbs. And then, and this hap, this has happened in the past too, and all of a sudden they come back on. So I don't know if it's, we thought about hat talking to our electrician we use and have him make sure we ain't got a loose ground or lug in, in the panel. Cause there's something strange about electrical connections over time. They have a tendency, the screws and the lugs have a tendency to kind of back out from getting hot and cold. But Dakota said it's, it's happened in the past, same thing. Lights kind of get to a point where they're just kind of flickering on the ends and they'll be that way for a couple hours and all of a sudden they come back on. That did happen last week, so. So like I say, that's where they're at right now. They were doing some touch-up painting, cleaning floors and stuff. So we're pretty close to, like I say, probably by the first of the month, hopefully we can, we can get a refrigerator fairly quick and, and stuff.
Great job on that, Scott, putting all that together so fast.
It's about done. E O C, I sent you guys that bid. I, I did some questions to Brent, kind of explaining why it's only like a thirteen hundred less when we dropped out a fifty-four hundred dollar bathroom. He hasn't got back to me. I thought he'd get hold of me this morning before meeting. I know we requested a glass or a soundproof glass door and I bet that thing's probably at least three thousand dollars or better. There is electrical on there, kind of question, because it's sixty-seven hundred dollars. Talking with Kelly, she said the supplies in the floor are adequate for what they need. So basically, all we have to do is probably put some outlets on our new walls, according to code. I T was gonna take care of their, their part of, with the doors and stuff. So I was kind of wanting to know what sixty-seven hundred dollars was going towards and stuff. So I'm just kind of waiting to hear back, you know, if it's all justifiable, then we can get a contract and get going on it and stuff. Kelly said that the Sheriff's Department's gonna take care of paying for the consoles, the new console systems they're putting in. And you guys, I guess we're gonna pay for the radio and electric upgrades and stuff.
And the furniture.
What's that?
And the furniture.
Well, that's what I was talking about, the consoles, the furniture.
I thought we were buying the furniture, am I wrong there?
I sent her an email and her response was that the Sheriff's Department was gonna cover the furniture or the new console system that's gonna go in there with the four stations. And then you guys were gonna take care of the electronic radios, upgrades, stuff like that. So that's kind of where we're at right now on that.
I like your idea, question Kelly about the soundproof door. I don't know if we have that much use up there. I'm sure if people get loud, we can go out and tell them quiet down if.
Yeah, and stuff. And like I say, he calls it out as a French double door, which I'm not quite sure on the bid why he did that. Because he specifically talked about a soundproof door. And I'm kind of wondering why we need a sliding door there.
The only thing I could say on that is that so you can get some of these bigger consoles through the door.
Yeah.
They look like pretty big pieces of furniture, some of them.
Yeah, I'm sure, you know, it all breaks down. I mean, I'm sure they have it made so they can get through standard.
You would think.
Doors, you would think, yeah. Another thing is trying to find, because the doors are gonna be badge entry, is getting a sliding door with a latch that will made up to. Either that or we just, they gotta lock when they come in and, and unlock it when they go use the kitchen and when they come back and just manually lock it.
Don't you need a badge to even get into E O C?
You do, you have to get one in the door. You have to, once you go up the stairs, you have to get one. You have one at the elevator. You can't get to the second floor without a badge and stuff, so.
Unless that door's unlocked at the bottom, if they've got meetings or something going on.
But still going upstairs, you still can't get in there without a badge.
Yeah, they still have the badge, you know? And if they're using that, that north room and they got a lot of people coming in, I think they prop, you know, the doors so people, you know, that are attending class can come in and out and not have to have someone there with a badge to let them out. So that way, people going to class can't just go up and walk in the door and go into, go into nine-one-one, you know? So that's why we're looking at putting badge on, you know, making them badge entry doors and stuff, just to kind of keep people from wandering in when they got free time on their hands between classes or something and.
For not going where they're not supposed to be.
Yeah.
The other thing to keep in the back of your mind too, Scott, is once we get them moved over and settled in, what we're gonna do with that room up there?
Yeah.
And there's furniture and there's a lot of stuff there that we're gonna have to do. Some ideas, but that's down the road, I think, you know, more towards wintertime when we get to that point, but.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I don't know what, you know, the desks were mechanically would go up and down. And talking to Kelly, a lot of those are kind of a particle board and the mounts are broke and they're just, it's kind of, you know, they're not repairable. So I don't know if there's any resale value or if we just take them to the dump, you know, and stuff.
One of the things, I think we need to have a planning session once we know we're a little closer to that and look at the entire building. But I also, I'm sitting here just thinking about your budget because we will have to redo that room, you know, for certain. And so maybe we need to make sure there's enough in your budget to do some, some, you know. I don't know what it looks like over here, you know? Are we gonna have to move some walls next year? Are we gonna have to, we're obviously gonna have to do a lot of painting and that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, that room, you know, yeah, butts up to the jury room and the judges' chambers. There's not really much we can do with that room as, you know, as reconfiguring things. There's kind of the office in the back. It definitely needs new carpet, I mean, and painted. The carpet's just shot in there. It's, the history has told me it was cleaned with too hot of water and they lifted the glue. So it's been loose, it's got tape across the joint. We were cleaning, there's some, we gotta quit washing dishes and stuff. They need to take them home and wash them themselves because about every three months, that drain up there plugs and it was grease again. I brought my own auger in from home because it's a power auger. Got it, then we ran hot water. I made an adapter to go on the hot water in the sink and the hot water, it backed up and then the hot water melted it and the way it went. You know, their little bar sinks, they're meant for pouring coffee or getting a drink or they're not meant for, you know, washing dishes. And it's the configuration of the plumbing up there, for some reason, it's at every three months. And we've ran a camera down it twice now and it's always a big glob of grease and stuff laying in there.
And where are they, is, it's in the bathroom that they're doing that?
No, they, they have a little bar sink right in the room with them.
On the wall.
And it's, it's not a big kitchen sink. It's not, you know, meant for.
It's right by that bathroom.
Right here?
Well, no, the, sorry, the one that's in the jury, I think it's on that wall right there.
What's that?
The sink, is it?
It backs up to the bathroom.
Is it east?
The, the existing one, it's on the north wall. And right before you go in the bathroom, there's a small bar sink. What they've done, they've tied that and the bathroom sink together. And, because we've camered it, we've run water to see what, what, you know, is feeding, what feeds from where. And so we, hey, we end up with, like every three months, the toilet backs up in there and we pull it and auger it and it's, it's grease in it.
Well, and if we put a different department in there, I think a lot of those issues will go away.
Yeah.
And if push comes to shove, we could always take the sink out.
Yeah, but, I mean, it's, it's far, you know, for a lot of liquids and stuff, but it's just not made for, you know, and I know they work long hours and they cook and eat their dinners and stuff there, but we gotta take, take the dishes home and wash them and stuff.
Is that gonna be an issue over there?
It's got a full-blown kitchen sink. It's got two compartment and everything. It's, it's actually got a kitchen basically in it there.
Okay.
Lights over here, we've got the stands in, so we're, hopefully about the second week of August, first or second week, they should have the asphalt patch. They're waiting for the lights to get in. It's like anything else with the COVID deal. The lights are just waiting and then stand them up and be good to go and stuff over there. That did work in other, kind of raised a question. The lady next door, one eighty fields, I guess she owns that property, and her fence is all laying down. She's saying it's from snow removal because we pushed right there. And the fence is basically from the trees west to the alley. It's been laid over. Once we start pushing the snow east to pile it up, the fence is okay. So she would like something done with her fence.
Can you put a post in between every other post and stand that back up pretty easy?
Well, you know, they have the posts and then they have the two-by-fours between them. You know, we'd have to, you know, cut the two-by-four and, and pull it back up and, you know, attach them and stuff. She said they were concreted in. Mitch went over and dug around them. He didn't find any concrete in them.
I think the posts rotted off and.
Yeah, and the snow probably, you know, rolls up and falls and fell back against it and it's, it's laid it over. And we're over there, you know, messing with the parking lot, graveling it to make overflow and I guess brought it to her attention. She went out and looked and.
What's your recommendation on that, Scott? What would be a good fix long-term since you guys are pushing snow and stuff over there?
Just gotta be careful, you know, it's a.
But is a wood fence though the best thing to put back there?
You know, it's a wood, yeah. Dog-eared, you know, posts or, you know, on her side and stuff.
Is there room to put some like Jersey barriers in there on our side?
You know, we could stack them up or it's, it's like the, what we put around the.
Recycling center.
The recycle center, you know, if we stack them up a ways. I think it's, you know, not really pushing up against, like when they're pushing the pile up and then the top rolls back, I think it's going down and hitting the fence. Probably don't have anywhere else to put the snow in there. You know, start pushing it east before we get such a big pile there. As it fills up at the end of winter, it's kind of, as east end, if it gets all full, you know, that's kind of our last.
It happens to every fence up here, believe me. Hard to live in in Valley County, but I think we should try and do, we can, to stand it back up and fix it for.
Okay, like I say, yeah, if we can, you know, get, stack them too high or something or too high there. It's amazing what we found digging the lights. We, out in the middle of the parking lot there, we found foundations. Actually, the east light is sitting on five foot, because those are five foot down in the ground. It's sitting on a slab of concrete.
Oh, wow.
But we, it's sitting on a slab. We hit a foundation wall just prior to the west one. We had to break out to get down and stuff, so.
Old houses.
Yeah, that's what we got. Scott's got the propane containment yard painted. We got it power washed and he's, I think he's got it all covered. He may have one more coat, but we got all that painted. Let's see, you'll see, that's, we've got the E O C exterior lights now on a photo cell, dust of dawn, so it's lit up at night or gonna be. We've been, they're working on that between the lights. We borrowed the small dump truck from Jeff and we cleaned up. There was a bunch of concrete over there near the alley. Cleaned up what was, I guess, a compost pile behind our shop against that big old elm tree. And we got all the bark and stuff, or most of the bark over at Y Cat and got it hauled up and cleaned up. Let's see, it's, we kind of, you know, rearranged, got the files in the P A's office down there moved so Oakey can move back, move his office back around in there where Dale used to sit, so.
Where'd you go with the files?
Actually went back in the file room off of the prosecutor's office, that, kind of between there and the old door that goes out.
The door goes through the wall?
Yeah, so we got most of all back in there and stuff, so we're.
Scott, is that our big pile that's on the other side of the, so if you go down the alleyway, we've got Doug's storage garage on the left. There's a big pile of concrete and stuff in there. There's a big pile of concrete and stuff in there, is that the county's?
I'd have to look, cause the, the fence is probably about five foot off that north side of that building, so if it's beyond that. Um, our fence line kinda lines up with Mrs. Fields or, you know, continues clear across to back to Idaho Street. So I'd have to look and see if that's ours or if it's on the neighboring property and stuff. Um, you know, talked with Scott Carnes today, um, kinda about our site and where things are going, um. I talked to Cecil, Yellow Pine, everyone's happy with the way things are there. Warren Lake seems to be a hassle, um, it's, it's cleaned up. Um, I discussed some of the things out there, we're getting a lot of the weekend campers swinging in there and throwing their stuff out now, um.
That's been happening forever.
And it's, but yeah, it's just, but it's getting worse. Also talked about the two lodges out there, actually commercial outfits, they should have their own dumpsters and not be using that site. Um, so we need to look, cause there, he says there are probably three quarters of the stuff that's dumped out there.
Good to know.
So, um, we need to have a discussion. I know the Forest Service wants to come in and talk about it, um, I, I sent her an email Friday, you know, explaining what we're trying to do out there. We can't man it, I'm sure if we put cameras up, we're gonna lose it, it'll get shot or it'll get destroyed. And then if we do get information and, you know, law enforcement's gotta see whether they're willing to pursue it and the P A, you know, if we're gonna try to deal with illegal dumping, but I think it's just too hard to do, so.
Well, and our use is just getting heavier up in that area, we're just gonna, Scott's gonna either have to put another dumpster or change.
Yeah, well, talking with, with Cecil out there at Yellow Pine, he says that's a lot, he says a lot of their deals is recreational people up there and, you know, instead of packing at home like they should, they're swinging in there and just chucking it wherever they can and off they go. And, uh, so it's, with having unmanned sites, it's hard to regulate.
Rather have it there than left in their campsite, but at the same time, yeah.
Yeah, they need to pack, they need to pack it out or pack it home, but, um.
Honestly Scott, we deal with this every year in both places.
I'm sure, yeah.
And I know Scott's been under a lot of stress lately because of maintenance and broken down trucks and hydraulic cylinders, but he is catching up and.
Yeah, and then Mike, the, he, you know, Mike is the driver back to there, um, and he's, he's actually his long haul. His mother was the only, had to go to Texas, so he lost his long haul driver, cause right now the transfer station is flowing out the front doors. It's just, it's, and that's, we were talking today, we're kinda outgrowing that station out there. And we've got that report or that engineering study, but we, what's kinda holding it up is the information that we requested from Lakeshore. And I requested it a second time and then Scott emailed somebody, I don't know if they're corporate, and asked if they could help with it, but we need that information for them to kinda finalize our study that we paid for, but, uh.
Honestly, my personal opinion, and it's not worth much anymore, is the fact that he doesn't have enough long haul trucks.
Yep.
And he told me that he's gonna approach headquarters for another truck and two more trailers.
Yeah.
They're doing four loads a day now, they should be doing six.
Yeah.
He just doesn't have the equipment, so get the equipment.
Well, you know, and that's, and I don't know if he has the drivers, cause I, when I was out there, I went out and took pictures of it last Thursday, I think it was. And there's three trailers sitting up by the, and they're empty.
And they're empty.
Eric's the only one out there, and he's trying to load trailers, run up, push the piles up, you know, and take care of it. I mean, and he's, he's short-staffed is what he is, you know?
And I think his issue with the long haul truck is that the federal, uh, what do you call them?
D O T.
D O Ts, yeah, they're not just a normal state commercial driver's license, it's a federal deal and I didn't know that.
Hmm, yeah, I, you know.
May have to increase his wages, everybody in the county's having to increase wages to be able to.
Scott, do you know, has there been, like over the last couple of weeks, I know there were some interruptions in the service, like in the Donley area? Have we had any in the last week? I mean, are we getting caught up on that side of it at least, as far as the trash pickup?
I have, you know, I haven't been contacted by anybody, you know, saying their trash hasn't been picked up. It's, I know, wow, my, three of my neighbors have it picked up and theirs have all been picked up, so I'm not.
When I talked to Scott, I talked to him about two or three times a week, is the residential side is working great, everything is up to schedule. It was the trucks that lift the big containers over the back, that one was broke down. And so they couldn't do the cardboard recycling for like some of the camps.
Contacted by tackle toms and.
They're, they're catching up, I think he said by Friday, they were supposed to be caught up and all that.
Yeah, and stuff there, I mean, they're trying, it's just they're, they're experiencing the same thing we are as a county. They can't get employees, cause they got no place to live, um, and it's, it's just hard. Um, one thing that, uh, Summer told me up there in the past, that they contracted, actually the guy that runs the site in Horseshoe Bend now used, he contract hauled, long-hauled for them, so I don't know if they need to look at reaching out to see if they can contract some long haul people and do it or not, but, um, like I say, it's, the trash is from the, where the loader's sitting on back, that, coming out the front doors.
All he needs is a windstorm and it's gonna be all over that place.
And Summer says it does happen, I mean, it's, when, when we get a heavy, it, it's not, this is not a one-time thing. It historically has happened in the past, that occasionally they just get overwhelmed out there. And with only one guy out there, I can see it happening right now.
And we may have to reach a point, cause we've done this in the past, where we're gonna have to close it down or, you know, we're full today, we can't take anymore today. They're gonna have to turn people back and ask them back another day, especially the big commercial guys that are tearing down houses and that kinda stuff. We're gonna have to just be let, delayed until we can get caught up.
Yeah.
I think our, our, one of our big priorities is we gotta, we gotta figure out a way to go after those mixed loads.
I think that's a pretty good deal, we made that too sweet of a deal. I, I think two hundred and fifty bucks a load is pretty cheap, so I encourage him to sport it, know that, but.
Yeah, and he asked if we could come out and spray weeds, if we can, you know, um, for, you know, kinda get the weeds cleaned up around out there and stuff. I don't know what historically we've done in the past, if they take care of it, but kinda the weeds in that center section between, you know, the, the, where the girls are at, kinda, and kinda around that shop and stuff and things, I don't know.
You know, Scott, I don't, I can't say for sure, but I think that's in their contract to do, so you might dig that contract out and look at.
Well, they're supposed to maintain the site.
That's what I thought, everything.
Yeah.
Putting the weeds.
Okay.
Um, you might talk to Steve Anderson and see if he's got, somebody could come out with a U T V and spray it, but I think that's Lakeshore's responsibility.
Okay.
But you're gonna have to find the contract and.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm, I'm a binder with it in it and with the latest one and stuff, so that's kinda where I'm at right now, things and stuff. Do you guys have any questions or?
No, you have an action item?
Yeah, it's, it's actually the contract for doing the house that we're about complete, we're gonna sign the contract for it now.
This is it here and we just never signed it, or did we?
Well, I just got it, is the thing last week, um, Brent finally got it to me for, for signing.
And you agree with all of the expenses on it?
Yeah, cause it's fixed to, you know, it says fixed contract to the, you know, what the bid was, so, um.
Probably better approve this than, hadn't we?
So far, they haven't come to me with any extras or anything that they've had to do.
I would move that we approve the contract with Castle Mountain Homes for the remodel of the two oh five Idaho Street property.
I'll second that.
Who didn't second it? Um, the owner is required to make a deposit of twenty percent, did we do that? Did we give him twenty percent?
They didn't.
They didn't push that?
No.
So I'm gonna put zero there.
Yeah.
Hey, it's been moving second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I have a list of things that the fair board would like, uh, have looked at at the fairgrounds.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
I'm, you know, I, my, but I'm not spending any more money for the fairgrounds this year. My budget where it's at, I'm gonna be close to making it as it is. And, you know, I don't know why they can't, you know, like the dirt hauled in, um, and stuff, they claim they do it every year. Where's it go every year? What, you know, what, and, um, but I, I can't spend any more money for them. And be honest with you.
Some of this doesn't look like it's necessarily money to be spent, but it's time.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Well, that's.
What I would suggest maybe is sit down and look at it and put it in next year's, you know, I don't know. Doug, what's our mailing address?
Two bucks, one, three, five, zero.
They may be asking you to run a piece of equipment, I don't know.
I think some of it was grading and.
I will, I'll, I'm gonna scan it in and then I'll just shoot it to you.
Okay.
And, uh, he's got your phone number, right? Castle Mountain have your number?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna leave that blank, here you go, I don't know if Doug wants to test that or not.
And one thing we did, we did, uh, for, for the county vehicles, we did fix the washer down at the end of the bathrooms in the fairgrounds. So, um, I let Annette and June know, you know, they can, they can go down there and the sheriff's office, uh, let Kevin know, um, that that's available to clean their vehicles with now and stuff, so. We may, we don't have it locked right now, cause no one can remember the combination of the lock, but if we get too many private people or stuff using it, we may have to lock it up, but it's not locked at this time, you know?
Yeah, we just watch that, the biggest issue there is remember to winterize it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, cause, uh.
Is that's what happened last time?
We tried to fix the old one and we purchased another pump and motor. Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that it gets winterized and gets antifreeze in the pump and the pump drained out and everything and stuff. But it is available again to wash county vehicles and stuff and things, so.
And you did get my email last week about those used brick.
What's that?
The used brick over here at this house, that are by that little shed, I will come by and get those here pretty quick.
Okay.
So they're out of the way.
Okay.
Hey, anything else for Scott?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thanks, have a great day, we're gonna take just a couple of minute breaks, Jeff, cause we haven't had a break all morning, you know?
You know, I don't even know you, dressed up, he's wearing a collared shirt.
This is what vacation does.
About being cool, yes, t-shirts are.
Oh, you're cool, all right, dude.
Yeah, uh-huh. T-shirts are too hot. Maybe something back in Detroit or somewhere. People do.
That's the main place. Yeah, I got two.
Yeah, it is.
Hey, was your husband out riding this weekend? Calatzena Creek?
No. Uh-uh.
I saw him.
Oh, so he got rid of his dirt bike, but he, he's got his dual sport, he was at that Idaho Trail Mountains.
Oh, he was at Citra?
Yeah.
I saw a guy, uh, looked like him.
Yeah.
There's a lot of folks out on the roads right now.
Yeah. Where's Xena Creek at?
That's the bridge that is gone.
That's the bridge at the look far.
Oh, yep, well, he was up there, so he wouldn't have gone that far, hopefully. Got in big trouble by a guy up there at Citra.
Oh, he did?
There was a wound specialist that saw him, he had taken his bandage off. So the guy came through registration and he said, what, who is treating this? Fred goes, I am.
It looked bad, it was like bubbly and nasty looking and.
It's disgusting, so this guy is a wound specialist at the V A, so he came over and dressed it for him twice, so I made him dinner and Fred bought him a big, one of the nicer hoodie things, so, yeah.
That's pretty nice.
His, uh, arm looked much better after all of that.
It looked pretty bad there, or Wednesday when he showed up, I was like, ooh.
Okay, we're gonna move on down to our agenda, our next agenda item is, uh, road and bridge. Jeff, you got some action items, so whatever you wanna do first.
Um, de-dum, de-dum, let's start with, uh, Ken Roberts' plan for Old State Highway.
Oh, he's gonna fix it?
Gonna fix the bill?
No, this is the other end.
Oh.
This, this is, uh, this is off East Four Lane.
Oh, you, you.
This is the south side of the Gold Fork Arm, um, Ken's proposing a new little subdivision out there. Um, so right now, Old State Highway goes to the north off of West Four Lane, almost to the water's edge and there's a gate. Can't go any farther, cause the water's right there. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, on any of this stuff, um, so right about where the driveway is that goes up to the house, up three hundred feet before the gate, he's proposing on, uh, cul-de-sac, half cul-de-sac thing right there. And that's where his entrance to the new subdivision's gonna go.
The subdivision on the east side of that road or west side?
East side.
So it's north of your mom and dad's old house? South of their house, okay?
Okay, got it pictured?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, he's proposing on vacating the rest of Old State Highway from the cul-de-sac down to the gate, making a pedestrian path out of it. There's no reason for people to drive down there, I don't have a problem with it, um, that's his proposal, it is a public road, so we'll need your graces to vacate that and he'll go through the process of doing that, I assume. He's not paying attention, he's playing on his phone.
So Jeff, so this ends at the water, so there's no opportunity to expand this road into the future at all?
No, no, it's Robert's property on the west side, reservoir and B O R on the, east side, west side's B O R and water.
And at the water's edge, there is no, um, public access to the lake or?
You walk, you walk around the gate right now, if you wanna go fishing or something.
Does it take you down onto B O R from there, where the road ends?
Yes.
It's funny, cause years ago I used to walk down there and fish two or three times every year, but with this job, I haven't fished in four years, so I haven't been back.
And you still can.
Yeah.
But there's, so right now, everybody that goes down Old State Highway from the, on the south end, they drive down to the gate park or they drive down and go, oh, I can't go any farther, they turn around and his, his driveway.
So at, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, so that was one of the questions I had, is that gonna create a more of a parking nightmare down there at the end of the road now? If we have a subdivision there, is there a way to look at widening out the driveway or?
There's not a whole lot of room to widen.
No, I was gonna say, we've had a lot of problems in that area.
You've got, you gotta drop off on the west side, then you got Ken's property on the east side. That side could be widened a little bit, but we're at the dead end road, I mean, summertime, you, we could let people park on the edge of the road.
Mm-hmm.
Jeff, do you plow down there?
Yeah.
So is it easy to turn the plow around?
No, we back into his driveway.
So maybe what we need to do is figure out a way where we can get a cul-de-sac or something like that, so it's easier for the snow.
That, that's what's proposed.
That's what's proposed, I saw it somewhere, but I can't find it right now.
It's on the front page of that.
Oh, it's in the packet thing?
Diagram I sent you.
She's like, find it, here we go.
Oh, I see, that wouldn't actually access anybody's lots where the cul-de-sac is, it would just provide access going into the.
Yep.
Yep.
And it's a hammerhead at the other end?
What's that?
It's a hammerhead at the other end?
Um, that's out on his, that's out on his property in the subdivision, I'm, I didn't even look out that far.
Okay, but we're not looking at anything on the subdivision, the only thing that we're looking at today is just whether that we want to. basically terminate that road into a cul-de-sac.
Pretty much.
That's what I was wondering. Yeah, why are, why is this coming here first before P and Z gets it?
Well, we just, Ken asked me to put this on last week to discuss this, to make sure it's even a possibility.
Ken, you want to add anything? Come up to the mic, please. State your name for the record.
Name's Ken Roberts. I'm the owner of Clover Valley Properties, which is the landowner and holding entity of our farm. Do you guys have this copy of this? Small. Okay, great. Basically, there's a, there's a couple of points that I think that need to be clarified. One is, I think the, one of the primary reasons for doing this is to improve public safety. Unfortunately, in late 1990s, early 2000s, there was a fatality accident at that site where, and it may not make sense because you see a straight road on your map, but it's actually a drop off into the, what used to be a reservoir. And that your sight line is impeded to where you cannot see the gates that are a dead end as you go over that edge. Even as recently as last year, I was working on the roof on my house, and I heard a car accelerating from the south coming north. And as they passed our driveway, which is only about 250 feet from the gates, they were going probably 40 miles an hour, they locked up and skidded to a stop. Because on their, their vision sees the power line going clear across the reservoir. You can see the road coming out of the reservoir on the north side. And if you're not familiar with the area, you assume that you can drive right straight on through. So that's, that's one of the things is to provide a safe turnaround for people to, to get turned around in a, in a cul-de-sac. The proposal is to provide actually land. I would donate the land to the county for easement for that cul-de-sac. I would build the cul-de-sac to the county standards with the road department. We have a number of, as Jeff mentioned, we've had a number of trespass issues. People dumping carcasses of animals down there. There's one down there still. A lot of trash gets dumped there. He already talked about the people that turn around the driveway. Well, that's one part of it. When they come in, they turn clear around. Lot of people just drive right on through the farm, clear up to the state highway because they look at their GPS. It shows our farm road on Google. And we've tried effortlessly to work with Google to have that removed from their mapping, and to no avail, it's still there.
Shows the road over the.
I believe it does.
It does, because I was going, I didn't know we had a road that went over.
Used to. It used to be a school bus route.
Yeah.
We used to ride the school bus through there. There's a couple of things about it. One, it will reduce the amount of road maintenance for the road department by about an eighth of a mile. It's about 660 feet there. It does provide a turnaround for the snowplows. I know they used to try to turn up in our driveway and plow a spot for like a hammerhead to turn around. Now, what they do is they come down and they, they plow repeatedly to try to create a wide spot. And then they eventually back up into our driveway. And whether, if we've plowed, it makes it much easier. If we haven't plowed, then it's more difficult for them to turn around.
And can I ask a question on that? So who else lives down there but you? Why are we plowing that section? I mean?
Just for me.
There's three houses before you get to his house. That new Old Fort.
Old Fort Bay.
Bay.
Village.
That they're getting ready to start doing. There's a house right across from that. There's a house just down from that. Three other residences in there. But we go all the way down. Otherwise, there's nowhere to turn around till we get down to it.
And with this new sub, proposed subdivision, is that going to increase our potential to have to do anything there? Okay, all right.
Pretty much the same road, only it's gonna be a little wider, looks to me like.
The road, the road's newer pavement.
It was built in 2009 or eight.
2008, nine, right in there.
Go drive that area.
Won't add any extra because we, we already plow kind of extra backing ups and everything down there to try to get a plow truck turned around. The cul-de-sac's just.
And I guess my only statement or thought, Ken, is get it through P and Z and hopefully it'll get approved and go from there. I don't see an issue with it. I think it's great. You're bearing some of the cost, putting the road in, which is what we're trying to ask everybody to do and building it. And I just gotta go through P and Z, and then if it gets appealed, it would come to us. So I don't want to bias us.
Right.
For a yes or no today. I think we have to stay neutral, but I don't see any big issues with it.
I know, send us here as well, just listening. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sinda, but I think this would be part of a road development agreement with the county that we work out with the road department. Is that correct?
No. We don't have those anymore.
Maybe. Let me, let me finish with a couple of other points, and then I want to summarize. There is, there's public utilities that go through there. So I think, I don't know if vacating is the right term. I think that those easements for Idaho Power, their big transmission line goes through that area. Also, the telephone company has at least one buried phone line that goes through that same area. They would need to have access to maintain those. I doubt that the county will, who knows what the future holds, but I don't know that the county would ever build the causeway across there for a road across the lake anymore. I don't know that that's a possibility. North Lake Sewer and Water District does have some infrastructure in that road, at least down to where the cul-de-sac is proposed at this time. And then we are, we've already been annexed into the sewer and water district for both sewer and water services.
Any chance you'd be interested in building a pathway, causeway across their forest, so we could get some bike trails and pedestrian trails across the lake?
I, actually, I'm, I'm glad you raised that issue. Back in 2005 and six, this is actually my second improvement to public roads. My first one I did was out on Davis Creek Road Extension, where we, again, tried to solve a safety issue where it used to jog around by plant road. And the county at the time wanted me to build a bike path, which I did. And so there's a bike path to nowhere for about 1,000 feet there. I don't know what the future generation's desire is and what my children like to do someday in the future. But I suspect as a county continues to develop, a need for a bike path is something that we have talked about as a family. And I think we would like to participate in that at some point in time. Where that location is, I think, is yet to be determined.
Obviously, that was tongue in cheek, but I do appreciate that.
Yeah. And like I said, the, the subdivision that we're planning to build is a small six-lot subdivision. We're going to build the roads to county standards with a 70-foot right-of-way. We're going to maintain them as private at this point in time.
So Ken, what would be, now that you've raised the issue with utilities, first of all, I don't know that we can terminate any of their easements. So how would they get to their, their easements? I mean, if you build a cul-de-sac and basically it's blocked off?
So I think Jeff's maybe more qualified to answer that than I am, but I, I'm aware of gate systems that they use for utility access as a potential way to get through there.
The gate would just, the different type of gate would be moved closer to that cul-de-sac.
Who pays for that?
There's room for snowing there, but it's still within access to, you go down in there or whatever they need.
That be the utilities that pay for a gate like that, or?
Oh, we would do that.
Would the public still have access to walk down in there and fish?
It's public right-of-way.
Yeah. Well, run it through P and Z and hopefully we'll see where it goes, and I think it's a great plan.
Maybe Sinda has more input on this as well. I'm gonna. Okay, I think, I think the intent is to, to stop the vehicular traffic from going down that direction.
Those are issues I think you guys could work out in P and Z. What I don't want to do is learn all this information here and then bias us, so we can't.
Sure.
Can't rule on it later on if it gets appealed, so run it through P and Z, see where it goes. Okay?
That's good.
Hey, Jeff, you're still back up? Anything else?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Nothing else on that. That one's done. So we were gonna discuss the patrol vehicles. Kathy, down here at Dodge dealership, she came in and picked up one of these bid proposals from me last week. She is in talks with somebody back in Detroit or somewhere back there, wherever these cars are made. They've got, they can get us a really close ballpark figure for a price.
Within 3%.
Within 3% or 5% or whatever it was. Right now, we're in that, that window where it hits every time, every year. Prices have gone up from, I think, the three that we bought last year or two years ago. Two years ago, they were right at 30,000. New ones are gonna be rolling in about 36.
36, and you want four of them?
144.
144, and then if we're within 5%? Means so potentially, that's only 7,200 bucks.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So figure 30, 37, 38,000 apiece is ballpark.
Has anybody else bid on it? Mountain Home or anybody else?
Mountain Home called. The guy was, I, I really wish I could bid on these right now, but he has no prices. It's kind of the same thing across the board right now. Nobody's got prices.
So are you asking for us to award the bid today to Cascade Auto?
Nope. I, I didn't even put this on the agenda. I'm not sure where it came from.
It was asked me.
From last week.
From last week. We just tabled it for more information.
Oh, okay. So that's where we're at.
So my, my feelings are, I would include Mountain Home in on it. If the guy wants to bid, fine. If he doesn't, he doesn't. But make sure that he gets the scent of bid proposal, so we're staying.
Yeah, this guy, he was, he's really interested in it and kind of, he must, when we put a bid in the Star News, it must hit some national bid forum or something. I'm not sure how that all works, but.
So a month ago, we had talked about the fact that if we didn't order them right then, we weren't gonna get them for 18 months. Are we still in a window of that, or, I mean, what is our timing?
From what I understand, we're still in that window. Because they're hunting and pecking for a price for us. Sounds like a lot of these plants are gonna shut down for a week or so here shortly to, because the chip manufacturer's not getting the chip. So they're gonna shut down production for at least a week to try to figure out if they can start catching up. Because I mean, there's thousands, millions of vehicles sitting out there on hundreds and hundreds of acres, brand-new vehicles, and they're just sitting there because they don't have that chip.
When I talked to Kathy here, whatever day it was last week, she said, we can get the vehicles. We just don't know what the price is gonna be.
Okay.
So I think we should go ahead and pursue this pretty quick. And maybe even agenda next week for actually awarding the bids and get these coming.
I think I gotta re-bid this. So I've gotta redo the newspaper.
Why? Well, I guess you would.
Didn't have anybody respond.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think there's, Brian's not in here, but I'm pretty sure there's a legal aspect of that where we gotta advertise for two more weeks.
Sheriff, Dave, you guys have anything you want to add?
We don't, we don't have to for this state bid, but Kathy's not part of the state bid process. And if, if you want to involve Cascade Auto, then we have to.
We want to keep our, our locals in business as much as possible.
I mean, I can go to Kathy and say, yes, we're, give me a bid. I can call Mountain Home, give me a bid. But the procurement policy states that you need to advertise for two weeks.
We need to follow our process.
Yeah.
And I would let both Kathy and Mountain Home know that, hey, even if your bid says this was the base price, it could be 3% to 5% more. As long as that's on the bid, we're okay.
Okay.
You know?
Okay.
We understand they gotta have some flexibility there. Sheriff, anything you want to add? You're, you're really thinking hard, I could tell.
I was thinking about it, yeah. Well, it's really difficult for them as well, that just throwing out a bid that. Or the locals could be the first thing.
10% more if you're local. Yeah.
10. 10 is what I read.
When I talked to Kathy, she said, it's not really an issue of finding the vehicles. There is a chip problem. With them, it's more an issue of, I can't give you an exact price. And what I said is, I just want to get them coming so we don't get two or three years behind and have to buy eight or six or more. Then that's gonna be a couple hundred grand.
True.
Good thinking.
Did we get the two that we'd ordered from last year? I know one of them had gotten here. Is the other one here?
Is that a Durango? The other white Durango?
That is the patrol Durango, yes, that's the one. But it's all stickered.
Oh, that's.
Still haven't gotten the second one.
Been in shipment for about three weeks.
Yeah. Well, this is an action item, so I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we re-bid the four sheriff's vehicles.
So we're doing four?
Isn't that what it says?
I just want to clarify, because I know.
Four patrol.
Okay.
We put that in the C A P to do four of them.
Okay, so just as it says, four. 2021 or newer.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. And we did Old State Highway. What else you got?
Mr. Chairman, just to let you know, there's no indigent cherry today, so if Jeff needs additional time, he's got.
Well, great. So you have another 15, 20 minutes.
Good, so I can't push me very hard.
Hurry up.
So Skip just came into the office requesting a motor pool vehicle to take back and forth the post. He said he's gonna be coming back every weekend, driving it for other things other than county work down in the valley. That's against our.
Right. I would encourage him to take his own vehicle, and we're reimbursing the mileage.
Okay. He said either way was good, but I didn't want to get myself in a ringer.
Well, I don't see, I don't want to see him gone for three weeks, our vehicles. We have other people that need them, so.
Okay.
Let's encourage him to use his own, and we'll reimburse him.
He, he said he would.
Good.
Okay. Elt was part of this last time, East Lake Fork Road from the highway to the bridge. It just went into, they're selecting a engineering firm to start on the design. Elt was part of this last time. I doubt he'll take me up on it this time, but I need one more person to review proposals from six engineering companies and score them so we can pick one.
And it's not easy.
It's not easy. It takes some time.
Do we ask Paul Hefner to do it?
We don't have to pick anybody from here, but I need somebody besides myself. Then they will pick somebody. LTAC will pick somebody from LTAC or I T D to be the third person.
Oh, some of those guys on that road advisory board have done this in the past. Paul Hefner did it for the Forest Service.
That's a great idea.
That's a good idea. Okay, I'll put the email out to them.
Great.
Jeff, the biggest issue, I think, with East Lake Fork, that chunk of road was the right-of-way, wasn't it? Didn't we figure we had to buy a bunch of right-of-way that was underwater?
I've had a couple of engineering companies meet me on site up there before it went out to R F I. There's, there's some other options.
Because I was even thinking, instead of buying right-of-way, can we do a bank style with guardrails and keep it within the parameters, right? And then not, because that right-of-way is, is as much as the whole project.
Yes, that and the wetlands will cost a lot of money. But there's ways around that.
Okay.
So, okay, I'll put that out to the advisory board then and see if somebody wants to volunteer and help me. Um, West Mountain Road repairs we were doing south of Tamrec completed a couple weeks ago. Gotten a lot, never gotten a job with so many thank yous, so.
Great.
Um, Old State Highway construction from the highway to Loomis Lane will be end of August. Talked to Granite. Um, we do not have to open, open the budget up for twenty twenty-one, because he can wait till October to get paid. I talked to Doug last week, we, we put that money in next year's, road construction budget, so we'll just pay for it out of that.
That's great. The other question I had for you on that, is he gonna recycle that pavement back in?
It's gonna go, they're gonna grind it, mill it, lay it out, repay right on top of it.
Okay.
That's, that's their base course.
So he doesn't have to dig anything. My question was, is what should we be putting underneath that pavement? You know, I mean, do we need a broadband tube underneath there?
There's a lot of right-of-way in the ditches, fiber's already running down the ditch, cable one's running down the ditch.
Okay.
Yep.
There's no sewer down the ditch, I was trying to figure out how to get sewer out to some of those other, pieces of ground out there, but, I mean, that would take a whole engineering study to figure out the depth of that, so.
Yep, one, one side of the right-of-way is more than the other out there on that section, and everything seems to be going in the big wide ditch. And they've been boring a lot of it, so there hasn't been any digging because it's wet. Good on that?
Yep.
Xena Creek, that's twenty-eight miles from McCall. Uh, nineteen miles from Yellow Pine, so it's out in the middle of nowhere, on a major road. Um, we did lots of, public outreach. Plus I talked to Citra, which is the group that put the motorcycle ride on in Bergdorf, told them that's a full closure. Um, had a few people show up mad because they probably didn't get a map from their registration booth that showed there's no way through there.
They had a big map at the entrance that showed in very large letters that said, "Bridge out, no way around it."
Yes. I seen it. Johanna made sure that,
Yeah.
everything was good before the ride even started.
Right, and we told a lot of people about that, too.
Yeah. Um, other than that, we haven't had any big complaints about it. If everything goes as planned today, that bridge will be drivable at the end of today.
Nice.
Nice, very nice.
It's, it took me a day longer than what I had in my head, but, we're, we're closed through this coming Thursday. So we're, we might do a soft opening tonight. Cars do go, go across it, no biggie, but we're gonna pave it Thursday.
And you're gonna use our paver? Very nice.
Yeah, I'm getting Western State's trainer and Wyler's representative, they're, sounds like they're gonna drive all the way back in there and, give us a.
Oh, they love trips like that.
I know.
They can shoot that whole day with that trip.
Yes, so I've got asphalt lined up from Valley Paving, they're gonna fire their plan up, give us sixty tons and, we get that paved Thursday and be done with that. Uh, backcountry work. Um, my backcountry guy's wife was in a pretty serious horse accident a couple weeks ago. But put me off a little longer, but once the bridge is done, we're heading back. The stuff from Yellow Pine north up through Big Creek, according to the Forest Service, doesn't need hardly anything done to it, so I can probably just go run the baco through there probably real quick, clean some ditches out, clean some culverts and be done with it. But this south end, Bear Valley, Johnson Creek, East Fork, Edwood, it is tore up.
Yeah, you know, Jeff, I don't know what we're gonna have to do in Johnson Creek, but I sure get a lot of calls on that road. And it's not the north part, it's the south part that's steep.
It's steep and people just, they're pulling trailers, campers, they don't put it in four-wheel drive and they just gun it up those hills and just tear the living daylights out of it.
And I was reading the other day where part of Midas Gold's new plan now is to use Johnson Creek, so I think that's one of the things we need to encourage Midas Gold to, to pave is that road, but.
We've went through this with the Forest Service, with Jerry, myself, trying to get some of those sections paved, some of those steeper sections that just get rattle bumped up really fast. But we have to do Johnson Creek to get to the East Fork, so that'll be the first road we hit, probably starting next week.
Lots, gonna take a lot of water back there to get that one softened up.
That's our problem right now is, we've, we're, Granite has graciously, donated a water truck with a driver to help us do some of the roads up there around Lake Fork that they're hauling on. They're helping us a little bit where they can, because otherwise it's just beating their trucks up. Um, yeah, waters.
Can we look through LTAC, see if there's any opportunities for any kind of funding? You know, for Johnson Creek, maybe in the next two or three years?
They usually don't do a whole lot in that backcountry stuff.
Well.
Um.
The only place we could get.
It took me a lot of twisting to get them to help with that bridge replacement at Xena Creek.
So the only opportunity we really have there then is Forest Service dollars?
Forest Service, there's rack.
Well, I was gonna say, the Great American Outdoors Act money is also in place for stuff like that, I think that would be something else to talk to the Forest Service about.
Mary know about that one?
Uh, yeah, she knows about it, I don't know to what extent, it, it should be available every other year to the local governments.
What'd you call it?
It's the Great American Outdoors Act, just got passed. Funded with offshore, gas expiration dollars.
Need a pen?
Nope, it started to work.
Okay.
Great American.
Outdoors Act.
I would definitely have Mary look into that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know for sure if that's within the realm of, of that funding or not, but, that to me, like with the, you know, the amount of recreation that's back in there, and that's what, it's for deferred maintenance and recreation access.
In the summertime, that's the main access to Yellow Pine.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, South Fork's paved, but it adds about an extra half hour, forty-five minutes onto your trip. And it's narrow. Johnson Creek's pretty much wide the whole way.
Well, and then it would save us having to make chloride, don't we make chloride it now? There's the East Fork.
Private, um, Midas did from Yellow Pine up to the end of the new gravel, they did seven miles up, it's part of their permitting process a couple years ago. They put the new gravel down. They did pretty much all the flat stuff, as soon as it starts climbing. Mag chloride helps, but where people are spinning, constantly, just like Snowmobile, you get one whoop-de-doo started and by the end of the weekend, you got a three-foot deep,
Yeah.
four-hundred-yard-long whoop-de-doo. Guess that's a legal term, right?
Yeah.
Whoop-de-doo?
It's a technical term. So, like you guys in, in like a normal year, you just do one grading down there, is that?
Johnson Creek usually gets done at least twice.
Like a spring and fall kind of thing or something like that?
Yep.
And we didn't get it this spring, because those are the calls that I, you know, I sent that email to you and I think we all got them.
Yep, yep, he's, he went through all three of you.
Uh, we've got, Lauren on our road advisory group is from Yellow Pine, and she's very frustrated right now with our response there, so.
But we had roads fall apart out here this spring that I was not planning on fixing. And that, that's where West Mountain kind of took over, that took dang near my whole crew. And we were patching at the same time, just.
And the neighborhood, or the, what is it called, the stewardship funds that, is, doesn't the Forest Service have a big cut going back there? I think they've got some kind of a landscape project back there.
Well, that's a big, yeah.
Uh, yeah, but you can't use stewardship funds on county roads.
Yeah, there was some, there was some.
Their road, we just.
Laws is in there somewhere. Um, I mean, they're, they were gonna, they were gonna do a logging job in Big Creek this year, but that didn't happen. Just a big thinning project, trying to get all that dead stuff out of there. And the Forest Service actually has to get permission from me to put mag chloride down through the community of Big Creek, which they were gonna do.
And I think the big issue right now is all the loggers are slammed.
Yeah.
They, they can't, they got contracts from three years ago, nobody's even come in and bid on because they don't want it to work.
Right. And that's all dead stuff. I mean, it's all logible in Big Creek, I don't know. You can't be making a whole lot of money hauling log out of Big Creek.
There is no money.
Nobody wants it.
In fact, I've heard stories of some landowners that are actually paying people to come in and log, just to get rid of the dead trees, so.
Um, talking about trees, the big tree on Warren Wagon is coming down in two weeks.
Thank you.
Um, I met Idaho Power and, sorry, Ashflinder, if I pronounce this wrong, but Asplender, I don't know how to pronounce it.
Esplint?
They're, they got a hundred-foot boom lift, the tree's a hundred and forty-five feet tall. About seven foot at the base. They're gonna go up a hundred feet high and see if they can take off that last forty-five feet in one chunk. And we're good, we're, we have to clean the mess up.
And that's enough firewood for the whole community?
I've, I've got a couple people, I'm, Will Smith out of Lake Fork, I gotta call him today and see if he, see if he wants seventeen-foot lengths out of that for his mill. If he'll, if he'll haul the stuff off, we'll give it to him. Um, but yeah, the road will be closed for, an hour maybe, while that top's coming down, who knows? Those guys are good, I'm no doubt about it.
Where is that exactly? I don't know.
Right at Miracle Heights, at the old lake's inn right there. Next time you go by there, look, you might just drive really fast till you get out of reach of it.
We had a lady that was very concerned last fall, so.
Yeah.
It's very stout, those green trees around, it'll fall before, that thing will, just because it doesn't have any needles left on it.
Yep, that'll be there a hundred years from now.
Yep, probably. Um, response to Gammon Drive, I forwarded that to you Saturday, I believe. When do you guys want to answer that?
I'll take that.
I, I don't know how, Cinda was not in here. Um, we talked about it this morning, I guess it started out private, went to public, since the nineties or something, I don't know the whole story behind it, Cinda does.
Neither, and now, and I thought most of those were private back there.
It used to have a blue sign on it.
Yeah.
And we did an audit a couple years ago, found out that that was a public road, so the blue sign went down and we put a green sign up. And that's kind of when everything started happening.
We have many public roads that are not maintained by the county, and so that's,
Yep, right.
People need to understand that.
Thanks for answering that.
They need to do an L I D.
Okay. Um, we got traffic counters up again in that Clear Creek area.
I can't believe how much traffic there was.
That's, that is unreal.
It's unreal.
What kind of numbers were you seeing?
We were seeing about three thousand cars a week, in front of these houses on a gravel road that's dusty. A lot of those are priced side-by-sides, it, that's the main road to the whole Clear Creek drainage. It's, yeah, it's, I, I can, I know what these people are complaining about.
Jeff, is there any way we could do signings on these gravel roads to encourage people to stay on the paved roads?
Nope.
There's no paved roads anywhere around there to.
You can't get to Clear Creek.
Back in there.
You can get up to the top where you hit Skunk Creek and turn right, and then that's paved down their ways. I don't know.
Get to the top. Up of what?
Where you come up the dip and up and turn right on Clear Creek Road. Down there, what, a hundred yards is where the pavement starts, if we could get people to go that way, instead of through, that subdivision, they're gonna get to the same spot.
Oh, you're talking Alder. One that goes around.
I don't remember.
The one that goes around the reservoir?
Yeah.
That's Alder. There's a few people going through there, but the main majority of traffic is going, down, down Clear Creek, down through the dip and up.
So they're staying kind of on the main part?
They're following the signs, says Clear Creek.
Well, that might be a chunk of road, that Skunk Creek dip, that we might think about in the future, getting some pavement on that. Because it does get real washboardy.
Washboardy and it's, it's high traffic.
And then if we build this campground up Clear Creek, we're just gonna double the load.
We're gonna add to it, so then it goes right back on us to, just like we're expecting people to do what they can to roads.
The other question I had on, since we're on Clear Creek, is, is there any plans down the road to chip seal that first half mile off the highway?
It needs to be chip sealed again.
Really bad.
Yep, we'll see where we're at next year.
Because I think that's gonna come apart if we don't.
Not either, it actually probably needs an overlay on it, if I remember right, from the I-Works assessment was a, an overlay.
I think that's one of our, fastest-growing recreation areas is that whole Clear Creek area, because they can go clear to Worm Lake, or they can go clear to Garden Valley.
Yep.
It's a pretty popular area.
What people are up here doing, the snowbank road, I just talked to Scott Inundia this morning and he, somebody mentioned to me a couple weeks ago about how washboardy it was, and Scott just happened to call me this morning and, he's like, "I can't keep this road together. I blade it one weekend with traffic and it doesn't even look like we did anything."
I'll tell you what, I was up, uh, Lit Creek Road yesterday and I could not believe the number of vehicles that were going up and down that road, considering that it was closed.
A little smoother, isn't it?
It was a little smoother, but.
It's about all we can do to it. Um, that's gonna be another rack, I've already talked to Will Perry about that, it's next year's rack.
Nice.
Money, we put one in for no business this year, we'll see how that one goes, that Creek will be the next one. We'll start seeing if we can get some money to help take care of some of these, sort of easement roads.
Okay. We're out of time, Mr., anything else?
Silver Fox thing is still ongoing, I don't know if Mr. Abrams has talked to you lately. So that gate that used to be at the intersection, got moved up to the private property line up at the one gentleman's property.
Oh, you're talking the spur road?
Spur.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody beyond that gate has the code to get through it. Now they want to put a big electronic gate back down at Silver Fox, where the old gate used to sit. Where everybody will have a code, they can go up to and punch it in and the gate opens. They want to put it exactly where the old gate was. I don't have a problem with it, but it's in the right-of-way. It's off the right-of-way far enough to where we'll never have to deal with it. I've already told Mr. Abrams that if we do let you put a gate there, there will be something in that agreement, stating that if we ever come in and widen that road, the homeowners will be responsible for moving that gate.
And that's county all the way up to the second gate?
No.
No?
No.
I don't like blocking county roads with gates.
It's not a county road.
Okay.
No, it's, it's blocking off the private Silver Fox spur.
It's private road, they can do what they want.
Long as something's in writing, saying that they will remove that gate if we ever decide to widen that road through there. I don't know where we're at on parking on the right-of-way, down on Silver Fox for the people that can't drive up that road in the wintertime. Parking available down there, but this was the big,
Yeah, it's, they use, yeah, they use only stuff.
And I see he's on the, planning and zoning agenda to, to C U P for,
For the year.
That year, you know, but once again, it's gonna go back on, does he have his own parking?
Right.
And I think that's where, another one of those issues where I think you need to be able to, attend those meetings and have an influence on P and Z, this is what needs to happen for everybody to be happy. Whether the applicant winds the road or builds the road or whatever, but you need to be involved in a lot of that stuff, and I'm gonna.
I do know Oki's been chatting with, uh, the homeowner at the end of the road up there, so there's been some ongoing discussion, we should definitely.
Oh, Salisbury's down there?
Salisbury's and then also with, um, blanking on his name, the guy at the end of the, or the, that put the gate in last year.
Oh, Jacobs?
Jacobs, yeah, so.
Okay, I guess we'll just see where that goes.
Really, again, our concern ends at the end of the county maintenance, I think that was Oki's recommendation last year, is what takes place beyond the end of the county maintained portion of that road, is up to those guys to work out.
Right.
So our only concern is the marked areas that we have right now for parking and it's,
Okay.
enforcement for day use only.
Okay.
Okay. That it?
That is it.
All right, I hope you had a good vacation, now it's back to the stone.
I was back all last week.
Oh, were you?
Yeah.
I thought you were gone last week.
No, that was two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, good.
Next week, next week's first of August, just so you know.
Oh my gosh. Hey, we're gonna move on down our agenda item, we do not have, an executive for indigent and charity today, so we're gonna go on to our next commissioner discussion. We have action items, first one is the meeting minutes of July nineteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I just sent those out this morning, so if you guys want to postpone that until next week.
Oh, I'm good.
I got a chance to read them, so.
Okay.
So I entertain a motion to approve or disapprove?
We approve the meeting minutes of July nineteenth.
I didn't see them, but I'm sure they're just fine. Second that.
Who's in a sign on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, Idaho Department of Commerce, what are you guys here for? Let's get to yours next.
That's the E D C.
Okay, so come on up, Idaho Department of. Idaho Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Professional Grant. Are you Jill?
I am.
We finally get to meet.
This is the new Andrew.
New Andrew.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Jill Morris Chapman. I think we've all met in one way or another in the past, but my new hat now is in Andrew's old position as the Executive Director of the Economic Development Council. And we applied for the Rural Development Professional Grant from the Idaho Department of Commerce as we have in the past. And we did, we are being granted the full $30,000 that we did request. And at this point in time, the MOU needs the signature and approval of the commissioners so that we can move forward.
Hey, do you have a copy there?
I do, yes.
Jill, I know I have it somewhere, but I can't find it right now, and I don't want to spend the time doing it. Thank you.
As I'm on that board, I won't make that motion.
So I'm gonna make the motion, then, and we approve the Rural Idaho Economic Development Professional Grant from the state of Idaho and the Department of Commerce called the EDPRO.
I'll second that.
Move to second. Need more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Yay!
Congrats.
Yeah, welcome.
Yeah, I was just wondering, how'd you get down here on your motorcycle? Looking that good.
I did ride the motorcycle today, maybe next time.
Make us all jealous.
What kind of bike do you have?
I have a 2017 Indian Vintage Chief.
Very good looking motorcycle.
It's an amazing bike, yeah.
It's a lot of fun.
I hope I'm doing this right.
A lot of the major issues in Valley County are being addressed by the Economic Development Council right now, so being critical that we...
Oh, it's been awesome to have that. I just don't have a place to attest, but I sure wish you'd look at that, if I did that right. Okay, and then, anything else, Jill, you want to talk about?
No, I don't think so. I think that covers it. Thank you for today.
Okay, let us know if you need something.
I'll be back when I get my bearings a little bit more to be able to give you a full update.
Okay, great. And we're gonna move on down. Our next item is the shredded agreement.
Ms. Chapman, do you want to submit this, or would you like...
I have to have it signed by our board.
Okay, fantastic.
Send it. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
If I remember right, this requires an electronic signature.
The shredded agreement, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, and she did send you that link.
And Doug, that's everybody in the county is taking that opportunity, or is this just your office?
This is just gonna be our office at this point in time. I believe that Casey did in fact reach out to the departments to see if they had any documents. I don't know if... I apologize. I don't know if anyone responded or not.
I move that we approve the shredded agreements for the Clerk's office.
Second that.
Who in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Get Casey to help me with this, because I don't think I can do it on an iPad. Hey, our next agenda item is request to hire the geotech to conduct analysis of the building site near McCall Anix. And we kind of talked about that this morning, using the harbor funds?
Yes. And this, so, this is the stage that I'm in with all of that. I've met with Idaho Housing, the people that build springs. They are very interested in doing some kind of a joint partnership with that. What they've found was with that old dump being right there, they had a lot of issues with contaminated soil underneath. So I don't feel like we can do anything until we know for certain what we have. So we need a geotech to go in there, do some monitoring and see...
Cores, is that what they do?
Yeah, I guess they do cores. It costs them $750,000 to put that road in. So it honestly might be just a contaminated site that is not good for anything.
And I'm afraid, sure, if that's the case, I remember when I... A year or two after I first got on, we talked about that, when they did the springs and moving it across the street. And it was discussed that you would have to go down 27 feet to get to base rock. 17 feet, I can't remember.
Wow, if there's anything like that...
Because it's all trash.
That whole area there. So just directly to our west, it has the area that's been scooped out, cleaned out. I think they'll probably have to have some geotech stuff done, too, but that has now sold. I'm wondering if we wait and see what they do. And then instead of coming down the existing road, enter some... Oh, wait, no, wait. It's still gonna be all trash underneath.
You have to go in and take the trash out and then backfill it all with material.
It's not worth it just for 15 units.
That was our concern, just why do we even own this piece of ground? I think it was the old McCall city dump.
What was the amount that the... Do we know what the contract would be for ours?
I don't. I don't know what the geotech would cost us. We'd have to get a bid. I think it's worth doing everything we can to try and...
So let's go ahead and get a bid on it and let's see what it comes in at. It may be drilling holes and major core samples. See how much it costs, and if it's a lot, then we won't do it, but... Or maybe not do it, I don't know, but just kind of know, remembering from what's there that it's kind of no man's land. I know they used to snowmobile race down in that hole, and they had... They even had some dirt bike races in there at one time, where all that got built up.
Might be boat storage in the future.
That's what I was gonna say, when we're back to the parking lot that we were talking about, but I'd like to keep moving forward on...
Yeah, me too.
I don't know what we can do with it.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion that we authorize the use... Or the authorize Commissioner Mopin to proceed with the geotech to receive bids for a site analysis.
I'll second that.
Who in a second, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Hey, the last item on our agenda before lunch is Yellow Pine. Mary, come on up.
Morning. So we received the contract for... From Commerce for the ICDBG funding for the Yellow Pine, excuse me, emergency drinking water repairs. So you should have both of the originals that need signatures. This grant was for a total of $150,000. They also have funding from USDA Rural Development and Idaho DEQ.
So that's where the $300,000 grant match is coming, is those other agencies?
Yes.
So the county will not be spending any money on that grant match?
No.
Okay. That's my question.
So Mary, oh, here, wait a minute, maybe I found it. Yep, did you already print them out? Oh, man, you guys are awesome. So we need a motion then to approve the acceptance, I guess, of this grant?
Yes, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Yellow Pine Emergency Drinking Water Block Grant from the Idaho Department of Commerce.
Second.